Happy first day.
Happy first day. Glad that you're here. Glad that you came back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to be right here. Thank you. Two, one.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the board meeting to order. This is the August 20th board meeting of the MRRH School Board. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. I-
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
-of the United States of America- And to the republic-
For which it stands- One nation-
Under God-
Under God- Indivisible- With liberty-
Liberty and justice-
-and justice for all.
All right. Kat, do we have anyone for public forum this evening?
We do. Gary Skolnik is here this evening for public forum.
Great.
Ms. Norton, I do not see a Gary in our participants list.
I see him over there.
There he is.
Great.
All right, Mr. Skolnik, here you go.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm asking that you guys approve implementation of guidelines and a platform for learning pods. So presumably, all of you have heard about learning pods now. Parents have been scuttling around getting groups of kids lined up to do their studying together. This is great. We're going to do it. I've got a ninth grader, and I envision a couple of power cords slipping out the front window, out onto the porch. Kids will be, you know, on different sides of the porch, and then they'll probably retreat to the backyard for some volleyball. It's easy for us to do. We've got a porch. We've got a backyard, and we've been in the district for a while. But this would be a lot tougher if this was our first year in the district, if we lived in an apartment building and didn't have sort of COVID-safe-ish places for the kids to be. So I want the district to step up and create, just put out some guidelines, say this is a good way to do it, and also try to help with the matching. So give a, have a platform where parents can go, see the phone numbers of other people who are interested, maybe see the resources that those people have available. Teachers can get involved and say, hey, these are the kids who are in your, who are classmates of your child. It would be great if you are going to do this, you know, depending on who's living in your house and your COVID risk portfolio and profile. Let's do this. You guys need to be proactive because they're happening whether you like it or not.
Thank you, Mr. Skolnik. Appreciate you taking the time to join us this evening and share your thoughts, and we will hear from anybody else this evening. Kat?
There's no one else signed up this evening.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Back in.
Thank you. Ralph, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. We'll move on to our first study item, then. I see that our ITNer architects are with us. Hello. Good evening.
Hi. Thanks for inviting us.
Yeah. Hearing what's going on. I'll mute myself. Go ahead.
Hey.
Are you the only two representatives from ITNer this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Is that coming up for you guys? There we go. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
So I think the last time that we met with you all was back in June, and we've been really busy over the past couple of months. And so we wanted to just briefly touch on where we are in our process. We have some updates and then a couple of next steps in our ongoing communication strategy. So we've seen this graphic before, and we'd just like to review it. So we are 95% of the way done with our pre-design and programming efforts. There's a couple of things left out there, and we'll get to those in a minute. And then we're moving through schematic design at a pretty good clip. Our next phase at each of the buildings will be design development, and that's when we really start to look at the building systems, the structure, mechanical, electrical, plumbing strategies, and then construction documentation, which we will work through the winter on, planning to bid these projects in very early spring and then start construction in the spring as well. So the pre-design phase at each of the buildings, we are nearing completion on our field documentation, and there's always going to be a couple of things that we didn't quite get or some areas that we need to come back and look at. But we've got those buildings pretty well documented and modeled in the 3D program that we use to produce our drawings and our construction documentation. The topographic and land surveys are nearing completion. The survey at the ECC that we need because of the site work and the fencing, those pieces that we're doing there, is complete. The elementary school survey, we have a draft, so it's nearly complete. And then the high school, middle school survey, the crews have been out for a couple of weeks on site, and I think they will be there for a couple more weeks to wrap up that bigger site. The geotechnical investigation, which is testing the soils where we're going to put the additions at the middle school, high school, will begin soon. So we've got that scheduled. So the middle school and high school schematic design phase, we confirmed the space program with stakeholders for several different areas throughout the buildings at a series of meetings in July and last week. So we looked, we talked to athletic director, media center director, alternative services director, student services director, met with them and talked about their needs, specific requirements, and then came back and looked at space programs last week. And those are really kind of pretty well-developed adjacency diagrams that show spaces, how they connect, corridors, and then start to look at where windows are and what this is going to look like three dimensionally. So we are incorporating stakeholder feedback from those meetings last week, and we hope to be wrapping up schematic design by, in early September. The elementary and ECC schematic design, we reviewed the elementary school floor plans just this week, and we're incorporating feedback from the administration there. The ECC plans are under development right now, and we will meet with them soon to look at the couple of interior pieces there. We are also doing ongoing coordination with a civil engineer on the site work at both of the sites. The district managed projects, the, if you've been on any of the campuses, you may have noticed workers in lifts and equipment moving around and things like that. So building envelope repairs are underway, tuck pointing, roofing, window replacement, and then is ongoing and will continue to be through next summer. HVAC replacement is ongoing. And then we were really fortunate in that we got to do a couple of things this summer that we hadn't anticipated. One was to abate the asbestos in the boiler room, where, if you recall, we're going to put student restrooms, the teen kitchen, wow, and receiving off of the cafeteria area. So that abatement is complete. And then I believe this week, they're actually cutting up and removing those big old boilers that are in that room. So that's pretty exciting because that buys us a couple of weeks next, next summer. So we'll really be able to hit the ground running next summer on construction. And so we're just always looking for ways to best optimize the timeframe for you all. So it was really exciting that we got this underway this summer. So our next steps are, after we're done with schematic design, we'll do a cost estimate check. And this is a rolling review, so we won't stop working. We'll keep designing and we'll keep moving forward. But we just want to make sure that, that we are ending up at the numbers that we have shared with you previously and within your budget. We anticipate, especially at the middle school and the high school, as the teachers start to come back and school gets started in September, to meet with the staff and let them know what we're doing and what they can anticipate over the next year to two years. And then we are working towards an initial meeting with the Maplewood Architectural Review Board in October. So our submittal for that will be the end of September, and it will likely be just our first touch showing them what the outside of the building will look like. But that's a big milestone in our, in our touch point with Maplewood. We're working with the district to get a Google Doc folder set up so that we can share the drawings that we're working on with you all. And then also, we invite you at your convenience and when you guys all have more time to a work session where we can look at some of the plans in further detail. We're really excited at where things are going, and let us know if you have any questions about this.
Thanks, Julie. Any, any questions, board? I know we're still fairly early, and this is a clear path forward, so.
I might also add that we provide the updated report that has the traffic signal light, and there are no red lights at this time. So everything's pretty much green, except for a couple of yellows where we're waiting on some other companies to provide information. So, all good.
Great. Well, thanks for joining us tonight. We look forward to hearing pretty frequently, I think.
We do, too.
Great.
Very good. Thank you all.
Right. On to bus routes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is one of our formality-type presentations. Every year, the board needs to approve the bus routes. We're starting in a virtual format, so the bus routes are not relevant at this time. However, if we were in school in person, these would be the bus routes. So there has not been any changes to the bus routes as of yet. However, at such time when we arrive at a, at a point in time where we are in person again, these bus routes will be adjusted based on the ridership that we anticipate and to accommodate social distancing and whatever other measures that the county has mandated.
Great.
So you'll see that there's separate documents for each for the ECC, the elementary and the middle school, high school together. Are there any questions? Okay.
Thanks, Chris. All right. Moving on to buildings and grounds. Staff.
So Mike Wieland sends his apologies. He is in Portland this weekend, so I'm giving an update on his behalf as well. But he did want the board, to remind the board, that we do have interim directional support for the B&amp;G staff from Mike Wieland, and he is helping us with safety and security preparation specific to COVID-19. He's helping us monitor existing work projects and making sure that we're on track. And he's also helping us work with the architect to identify those future improvements that you just heard about. He wanted to give a status report so that you're kind of aware of what's going on. Summer cleaning schedules will be completed by tomorrow. So we are on track with our increased, both our regular cleaning and our increased COVID sanitation efforts. The sanitation and COVID-19 supplies have been received. They've been making rounds into classrooms and parts of the building to put those up. They did training, actually Tuesday, on those new electrostatic sprayers and sanitation chemicals, and so I think that went really, really well. They are also spending time this week going over revised schedules, the hourly, daily, and weekly cleaning schedules and routines for both buses and schools so that everybody's clear on what those rotations look like. As I mentioned, we do have sanitation wipes and cleaning supplies in all the schools and classrooms and offices. We've got the walkthroughs done for the Plexiglas shields, which are on order. We do have them installed in our public areas, but the classroom Plexies, we're anticipating delivery in the next week or so. We have signage placed throughout the building also for specialty traffic flow. So I thought you might be interested in just seeing what some of those things look like. So you can see in the far left-hand corner, the touchless sanitation pumps that are foot-operated. You can see directional signing on the floors. You can see kind of what the Plexie looks like. This happens to be the central office area. So you'll see a combination of signing, Plexie barriers, and cleaning supplies throughout all of the buildings. And then, just in terms of capital projects, I know you just heard from Julie, but they've started work on building envelope. Tremco's been at all of our sites, working on tuck pointing and other pieces. The shingle roof at the elementary work started on Monday, and so he's just giving some reports of where we are with completion of those pieces. We have deferred the start of the window replacement until late May. He was just very afraid of disruptions happening and weather in the winter, and so he's recommended that we do that in May. We also have been working on the HVAC and making sure that all the controls and equipment are finalized. I know he's been working with ITNer, but they've also been cleaning all of the spaces and making sure that all the filtration is working properly and perfectly because of the COVID situation. And then they are wrapping up the asbestos abatement as well. So that just gives you an idea of what's happening on our, on the district side in addition to what ITNer is doing for us. And then we wanted to also just mention that we are going to post and hire the Director of Buildings and Grounds. We're recommending that that posting be made in December. We wanted to make sure that we had schools up and running and had some stability in the department. That hiring process will commence, and we'll be bringing you hopefully a stellar candidate to the January board meeting. We hope to retain Mike as a mentor once we hire someone to ensure a smooth transition because things have been rolling along really, really well in the last few months as we've gotten things moving. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Will Mike be able to join us at a future meeting? You said it was just a conflict.
Absolutely. He's in Portland. He had, I can't remember, a family event that he had to attend, but he absolutely will be able to join us.
Great. Look forward to meeting him again and engaging. So, thanks.
Hey, Katie.
Yeah.
Can I ask, I mean, I know Mike's going to be joining us in future meetings, but we make this just a regular, like, placeholder on the agenda, knowing that, not only where we are with ITNer in the construction, but just the changing times around COVID and the safety precautions we have to be in place. If we can just keep that on the agenda every month, I think that would be-
Agreed. Likewise.
Like a regular B&amp;G update?
Yep. That would be great. Thank you.
All right. Policy changes. Karen?
Thank you so much, Katie. So everyone, I wanted to do my due diligence with this particular last, well, just real sudden recommendation coming from MSBA. I wanted Cindy Ormsby to give you a professional opinion via a memo so you could get her perspective and really how urgent all of these items are. So I hope that kind of was a great way to look at these in terms of, should we get this done right away? So I appreciate her getting that done so quickly. You had an opportunity to review, and Katie said it was okay for us to also put this on as an action item. I appreciate MSBA speaking to the need. Let me say that because things are fast and furious, as well as you all know. And I would hate for our policies to become barriers for us to really do what we need to do. And essentially, that's what these three things are, the two resolutions and also the administrative procedure, JOAP-3, is being recommended. And I know in particular, the administrative procedure is coming really to address HR things. And I didn't know, if, Roxanne, if you had any things that you wanted to speak to, any urgent needs that you wanted to share with the board? Because I know you all have read it, and you had a chance to think about it. Any other things you might want to add?
I would just say that that procedure is designed to make sure that if we, when we do, because we are doing daily health checks with employees, that those are just designated so that they're not medical records and we do not have to maintain them permanently. So the attorneys have looked at that language, and it just allows us to keep them for the period we need them and then dispose of them.
Are there any questions or any further study that we need to do? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Title IX policy.
I've been texting Cindy Ormsby. She was going to join us for this portion. She, in full disclosure, is in Colorado, and she is driving on a, on a business trip. So she said that if she didn't make it into the meeting, it's because her reception is terrible. So she and I have been looking at this closely for quite some time. I don't know how familiar you are with the rulemaking process with the Department of Education, but they have engaged in a very long process with lots of public comment and have come up with new regulatory guidance for Title IX. It is very different than where we were before. It is what we're being held accountable to. I do want to make sure that I say that it has narrowed the definition of sexual harassment. So everything else that we would normally do would still follow under policy AC and would be handled exactly as we have followed policy AC. So it doesn't change how we operate other than in this very, very narrow band where we will have to follow the new guidance. It does require that we separate the compliance officer and the Title IX coordinator because the, the compliance officer can no longer handle investigations. The, the Title IX investigator will be deciding if there should be an investigation, and then you need a compliance investigator. So we are recommending that Vince Estrada be named the Title IX coordinator, specific to ACA. I would remain the compliance coordinator for all other forms of discrimination and harassment, and I would be the compliance investigator in any of the sexual harassment conditions. And that gives us the separation that this new regulation requires. Do you have any questions for me?
All right. Thanks, Roxanna. I know, like you said, you've done a very deep dive on that. So, appreciate it. Mr. Rich, academic calendar. You're muted. Sorry. We can't hear you.
I never used to do that. Okay. Two weeks ago, the district calendar committee got together on a Wednesday afternoon. We had great attendance. I think we had 11 of 15 members, and I'm pointing that out because it's important to have a good cross-section of parents and staff members so that no one constituency has a louder voice than others. And the reason we got together was because the board earlier this summer deemed it necessary to push back the start of school from August 25th to September 1st. And so we needed to kind of move back the end of semester one marker because of the importance of balancing the attendance days across quarters. It's extremely important for lesson planning by teachers. So you will notice that the change here is that January the 21st, a Thursday, will be the final day of semester one. Friday, the 22nd, becomes the new teacher record day. It had earlier been the 19th, that Tuesday of that week. Finals will take, take place, for those who take finals, on January 13th, 14th, and 15th. Otherwise, no changes. Final day of school for the year is still June the 10th. And like I said, no other changes. And that's what I have for you on the calendar.
Thank you. Ed? Forward, any questions? Great. All right. Here in the dashboard.
Yes, the much anticipated metrics for re-entry. So everyone, if you go to, and you can see here, the first page, really trying to be clear on what we're trying to accomplish for today. I have to tell you, this has been a very collaborative process with the regional superintendents. I'm so grateful for Matt Goodman. He is the brain behind all of this information that you're going to see. And what you are going to see is a 20,000-foot view of the metrics. I am not going into real deep background, one, because it's Matt's work and it's pretty, you know, involved. And also, I really wanted to make sure you saw what you would see in terms of, you know, what we need to track and make decisions. So for you to really start to wrap your mind around what is potentially what we will do, what we will use, what we need to talk about. I know I've been looking at this and talking about this for probably two, two, three months now. So I'm really, you know, I'm ready to move along, but yet I know that we really need to talk about a process because it's a lot to move from one tier to the next. And the other thing is also the comfort level of thinking, okay, what does the board, what does the community feel comfortable with doing? And part of the end of the presentation is to really have a conversation about that tier two once again, and what does that look like? And what are the layers of, we really need to go back to all of those things when we talk about the metrics and the thresholds. So really, a discussion. And I know, Katie, you had recommended a, a action item in terms of saying that we're going to review and that we're going to use the metrics, the indicators, the three that we're going to talk about in just a moment. Not to make a decision today, but to say that we will have a method, a process. Correct, Katie? Because I don't want to speak out of town.
Yeah. I mean, I think, and again, we can kind of see how we feel at the end of the presentation here, but the idea of committing to a frequency with which we look data as well as the, the things that we are going to take into consideration, I think, could be helpful to us and to the teachers and to the parents. But obviously, there is probably going to be questions, and there's going to be a lot to digest. So we can, can move or not move this as, as it makes sense. So, yeah.
Yeah. Katie, that's a great way to frame that because I know you've heard a little bit of this, and even with the health professionals, they have, they have gone back and forth. I'll tell you about that in just a minute. They've gone back and forth in terms of what they have recommended and what they said, well, you didn't say that. So it's been a journey. I was allowed to join the subgroup that met with the health professionals, and when I refer to Katie, Katie's in that group. And it has been a great privilege and a frustration to sit in that group. But they have worked with us closely, and they have essentially- But they have worked with us closely and they have essentially given their blessing for these indicators. If you look at this table here, this is when the rubber hits the road. I'm sad that Wes isn't here, because I see his face every time we talk about indicators. So I'm really, really sad. But we're looking at daily number of new cases. So our health professionals are tunneling us that that is very important. And also, that we need to look at a moving average, and that's towards the end. We really need to look at 14 days is our window. And that is something I want you all to remember, even though we need to have, I recommend, a weekly review of what's going on in our area and also in the region. But in order to really think that we're going to make a move, we need to think more of a trend of 14 days. And that's like with all of them here. Test positivity rate in here is having, you know, if it's more than 10%, 5% to 10% or less than 5% of positive tests. And so with all of these things, if you had an opportunity this afternoon or early this evening, you know, I've given examples of what these tables are, are going to look like and what we're going to review. They're attached to board docs and I'll put those up in just a moment. And the transmission rate or are not is what we have. And so we're looking at one, 1.0, either greater at one or less than one. So you'll see that in just a moment. And yes, so when I was talking about the dashboard, and I've been talking, interjecting this off and on in other meetings, these are the colors that we were talking about. But after more literature review, and this is a recent thing that Matt was, he came across, is the Harvard work. And really, it's kind of a gradient thing that we're looking at. So orange has been added and also our denominator of 100,000 people has been added. So we've now made that addition to this. And so also, to go back to my introductory remarks about the collaboration, there's so many iterations of this. And, and again, things could change by the time we really start using this again, not radically, but we're at the point of tweaking things. And I think that is a good thing. It's because all of the superintendents are kind of thinking about different aspects that we need in order for people to, to really make the decisions. You know, the leadership needs to make in order for families and students and, and staff to be safe. So I just wanted to say, this is something now that we're looking at. So again, about that piece of collaboration, this is an interesting piece, using the colors that we've just talked about, okay? So this is represented with time, the seven, seven-day average. And if you could go to St. Louis and St. Louis City, if we think about just ourselves and where the spikes are, and that was one superintendent, and they all concurred that, you know, around holidays and certain moments, we see spikes. And this is kind of a PSA we wanted to have as leaders, that, you know, soon it's going to be, what is it, Labor Day? And we are, you know, we feel that a hypothesis is that we're going to have a spike again. And so we're hoping, you know, board, if you feel comfortable with this, as we go through these things, you know, it's a PSA, like, y'all, wear your masks, you need to do your social distancing, because the school is a microcosm of what's going on in our community. And if we can be safe when we're away, you know, we could potentially be in school. So I, I really like this. I think it's interesting. Now, again, it's not necessarily what you need to make decisions, but it is interesting to see what happens in the community around certain periods of time. Okay, so now I need for you all to look at some of the links. And the first one I want you to review is the transmission reproductive rate are not. So again, if you look at this, the target of moving to one or less, above one is increased spread, under one is reduced. So if you just look, so this is the most updated document that I have right now. It's from Monday. And if you look at where we were June 3rd, and then where we are right now, you know, we, we've had an increase. And this was also around about the time when the board made their decision, or they were thinking about making the decision for going virtual. Actually, that was around about this area. So you would be considering this. And that's also the point that I want you all to consider, is that there's not one data point that's going to tell you what is the, the decision. It's going to be multiple things for consideration. And that's really what's so complex about all of this. The health professionals in St. Louis County use seven different data points. Health professionals went back and forth and they said essentially, three is what schools would need. But they also said, there's just not one thing. You have to look at all of these different components, these three metrics, and, and look at over time where they're trending. So this one here, you probably have it out in front of you, just looking at, I think is these nine days here are represented in these bar graphs, or these bars in that area. Okay, so click out of there. And the next one is for positivity rate. And that, again, is tests that have been resulting in, in a positive test. So they actually had, oh, goodness, I don't know what I'm doing here. There we go. So one thing is really interesting is that not all of the health departments are reporting the same data, which is also a part of the complexity of this work and also trying to have conversations with everyone together and the level of transparency that's surrounding COVID. And that's why there's all those empty boxes in this area here under Jefferson County, and I just wanted to disclose that. And then here, this is where we are, where it really is starting to level off a little bit compared to where it was on July 28th. Now, of course, there is the issue of access to tests. Also, there's been concerns with the lack of rapid testing. So those are things that you also have to consider when it comes to this, but this is what we have. And click out of that.
Karen, do you have a question real quick?
Yes, please.
Does that include retesting data as well?
To my understanding, it does not, but I can ask and find out. I don't know, though. I will, I will make a note of that. The next one is daily number of new cases. If you click on that. And again, you know, Brandy, thank you so much, and I wish I could tell you in great detail. Um, you know, Matt did all of that work and I will find out for you. So, um, make it a little bigger. Okay, looking at, just for your purpose right now, but St. Louis County and St. Louis City, starting with July all the way to August 16th. And you can just see some of the fluctuation that we have here. And we just don't have the data here with the SLU source. But you could see how it helps to look at larger windows of time before really making a decision. And this just really reinforces this idea. You can't just make a quick decision. You really have to wait to see if this is really a thing, because you can look, I mean, just in the whole month of August here, how things have gone back and forth in terms of a decrease to an increase from the day before with new cases. All right. And looking at, the next one is the seven-day averages. And this, of course, is, the last is from August 9th to August 15th. And if you look at the table here, again, we're doing the Harvard recommendation of the denomination of 100,000 cases. And, you know, we're in the orange here, which is 10 to 24 cases per 100,000. Not yet, having the 10th to 16th here. But I doubt that there's much difference. But then the next, we have a 14-day comparison and change. Here we have St. Louis County and we have St. Louis City. So August 8th, excuse me, August 2nd to August 8th, you know, we had an increase of almost 16%. But yeah, at St. Louis City, you know, they're moving in the right direction. So those are the metrics for re-entry that we have tried to develop as a tool to help schools figure out where to go next and, and what's the best learning space that's safe for staff, students, and families. You know, I, just a personal commentary, I'm really frustrated that the state leaves it up to us to try and figure this out. Much of the work in the beginning is being modeled off of states like Minnesota. The governor mandated this, like, they made this something that the schools have to follow. And, you know, I appreciate the health professionals are, are being consults, you know, and letting us know what they feel is, is best, so we're not, you know, trying to figure that out as well. But it is, it's, it's hard, you know? But like I said before, Matt Goodman, he has done an excellent job in really making this something that we all can, can look at and understand and review and give to boards for you all to decide, you know, what you feel that you would want to do if you were to move in a tier. So I now would like to look at this last slide for discussion. As I said, there were two goals. I wanted to give you all an overview and then also open it up to the board and just see where you all are in terms of, you know, what is your tolerance for, for moving? You know, you've seen these different metrics here, now that we finally have that, but just, you know, where is your philosophy? What are your thoughts? How, how do you want to proceed?
Like I said, I think this is a lot of data to digest. And yes, I have had occasion to interact with Matt Goodman through Ed Plus, and I know he is a whiz, so appreciate that he's been involved in this for the benefit of the whole county, school districts. So, yeah, where are your, your questions, your concerns, a desire to probe further?
I, I think it would be good to also have him here to talk more at length and ask questions. I appreciate your presentation and I think it was excellent, but I also would like to ask some probing questions into the data. And I realize that kind of is hard for you, because you didn't develop the report. So I think that would be really important. And like Marie, Maria said earlier, I think having a, a regular update would be important as well, so that we can constantly keep up with the data, since it is changing so frequently, that allows us to stay on top of it in, in our decision-making.
Yes, Brandy, thank you for saying that. I, I really wanted him to be here. But he is not making house calls because of the, I mean, it's over 20. Yeah, so it's hard, but I think if you have, as we move forward, I will try and, and get those answers for you. I don't know, I mean, Katie, would you be okay? I mean, now that someone's asked if Paul were to come, because I know he's been developing that with Matt.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it depends on what questions folks have, like what, you know, he has the expertise to respond to, you know, the, what Matt brings to the, to it. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think this is obviously the beginning of a ongoing.
Yeah.
So perhaps just getting a sense of what our questions are and what, or where we'd like to go would be helpful, you know? We could push Matt to do a video or something, right? So they've got some fancy recording equipment at Ed Plus.
So, yeah, I'm happy to take, like, I'm not going to repeat the same thing, what Katie said, yes.
So on your slide, Karen, I think a couple of things that I jotted down as you, as we were going through the data was, you know, and you have it down, the ZIP code data and some age group groupings around the numbers around what ages are being affected most over the course of this timeframe, I think would be additional data I would like to sort of take a look at as well in determining this, the information. And then I, I may have missed it in, in kind of overall the conversation, but how do we, and, and maybe this is just a question for discussion, but how do we go about getting access to, are you get, you're getting this like a daily download from Ed Plus on updates?
Yes.
How would we go about doing that or getting info?
Yeah, yeah, okay, good questions. So like I said in the past, this is a portfolio approach, right? So what you see with the three metrics, that is not the only thing we need to consider and then we need to do some things that are more about who we are. And so we've talked more as superintendents and I've always said, oh, well, let's talk about like attendance, but I'd rather not. I'd rather look at what's going on with ZIP code data and then also the age group data. And two things, we decided that Matt was going to put all of that together for us, so we could look at our two ZIP codes and also who's around us to really ascertain kind of what is the trend now. And then also, the health professionals decided, you know, after we kind of had an emotional outburst in that one meeting, they decided that they would start to collect that information on different age groups, instead of just looking at what Harvard recommended out of, you know, so many cases in 100,000, we're going to drill into the data and look at age groups. So you all can make better decisions. You see more the school age group, what does that look like in our area, in those different age groups? So they're working on that right now. And the second part of your question, this, I ask this over and over again, every week. I said, okay, how, who's going to see this and how, how do we get a hold of it? And what I got this week is that it's going to be emailed to us, Matt's going to update it daily. And what I got this week is that it's going to be emailed to us, mask going to update it daily. He says it's not a problem, but it's going to be sent to us. I still don't feel really clear on like format, like it, it seems a little clunky right now, which it's going to be because we're creating it. I say we, Matt, Ed Plus, we're starting from scratch, but it's going to be sent to everyone. We'll have access to it, which also leads to the, the protocol on how we're going to review it. I don't have the answer yet, but it's on my mind. We need to figure this out so it is, you know, streamlined and we can actually use it. Because there's a lot that has to be considered because in the first part of thinking about tier two planning, we have to have a protocol for transitioning because it's a lot in order to go from all virtual to blended. Um, so there, there are many things to consider. And again, I'm not asking for things for you all to have a decision. I just want you all to put this on your head and we need to start that conversation once again about tier two and what it would look like and if we would move now that we have metrics.
Karen, I thank you for all of this information and the metrics. And I, you had asked for us to talk about like what we're comfortable with. And I can tell you for, for tier two, I would be comfortable if we were in green. But what I'm curious about is the, I'm looking at the proposed indicators, metrics, and thresholds that you provided to us. And I'm looking at transmission at the bottom.
Okay.
Okay. And so then you, you go over to where green is and it's less than one. That's 1%, right?
You are looking at the one that says the are not this one?
No. So if you go up to, if you scroll up to, two pages.
Oh, you're just talking about the chart.
Yeah, just the chart.
Yes, you're correct. Yeah, for transmission, it would be less than one.
Okay. So I, I know I'm, I'm going to ask you this, but that's, this is really a question for the person that created this and I recognize that. I'm just going to put the question out there though. Like, I guess, so I, I work with some agencies that have this, this chart, right? And they say, okay, in order for people to gather for work, then the transmission needs to be at point zero four. And so I see that here, it's just, it needs to be less than one. And so I, I just have a question as to like, why is it just less than one? Why is it not something specific that's extremely low, like very close to zero? So that's kind of just my question. If you're able to like take that question back and maybe get some more information on that, I'd appreciate that. But yeah, for, for me, my comfort would be, we would be in green to get to tier two.
Yeah, I think that one of the other things that will be potentially a factor is what happens when the school districts around us, so like our St. Charles friends who are primarily planning to go back into buildings next week with, I'm sure, a lot same sort of precautions that we have in our tier two plan. I think that will also be some we'll need to watch is just what what does the practical application actually look like? Pray that are 100% successful. So we will look at you know, some, some of, I think, just the community context, I would hope as well.
Katie, I agree with what you just said. I don't know if I'm at a place where I feel like I could say I'm landed on green like Nikki has. I'm not there yet, but because I think I want to look at the community context. And I also appreciate what Francis said as well, because I want to make sure that we're kind of drilling down on the data a little bit to not only MRH, but our neighbors. So, but I guess my question though is at what frequency is the board going to be? What comfortable level do we have in reviewing the data? You know, what, what is your recommendation, Karen? Or what is the board feeling, how, how frequent they want to see this data?
Well, I'll just start. I believe we need to look at it weekly, but then you also have to understand you're looking for a trend. So just because you're looking at it weekly, does it mean you act on that? You're watching the trend because I'm afraid of missing it if we just looked at it once a month. I think for planning wise, because shifting is going to be challenging. Because if you looked at one of the charts in, and I want to say April, in August, it just, it kept going back and forth. It was this one here, the new cases. And right now, we have a decrease in our new cases, but it's gone back and forth with increases to decreases. So that's why just looking at one particular metric is also challenging. You know, we need to look at regional things like you've seen here this evening, but looking at your zip code and I'm repeating what someone says, but I do want to emphasize that. And also what the health professionals say, you need to look on more of a broader regional look, but also you need to look more closely to what's going on in your space. Because there is, there, there are differences in our region and that's what's so hard. And it's going to get harder as we progress because as Katie said, St. Charles, they have this here with the color coding, but their philosophy is everyone's in school, but it's the guidance on how you behave in schools in red, yellow, and green. But everyone will be in school regardless of the color. It's just the guidance looks different at those different stages. So it's, it's just what
Are you proposing, I mean, I'm obviously, it's going to take a little bit to get into a rhythm with this, but are you proposing like a weekly, like 15 minute check in or something that we all can jump on? Are you proposing an email? I don't know, it feels like this is probably more than an email, but.
Um, well, this is the first time I've ever done this before. And I don't know if it's all seven or a subcommittee. Actually, I'm going to go back to what Maria said, I would like to ask the group, I'm proposing that frequency. We need to look at it, that's where I am right now. And I'm also proposing, we need to come up with something. But I didn't want to tell you all, I think we need to have a conversation around this and what you all feel comfortable with, if it's a subset or it's the whole group. I just, right now, I'm concerned about too much time passing and trying to move. I just because it's hard, it's, it's a lot to do that. I mean, a lot.
My, be saying something here, Karen, I appreciate all this information that you've given us and also Matt working along with you and other superintendents. I know it's a lot of data and information here. And I pretty much agree with everybody on the things that we need to know about. And probably getting this information weekly probably would be helpful. I'm kind of curious is, over the next few months, what is this going to look like? Particularly as we get into the fall of the year and we start dealing with people having flu and how this might affect different age groups in our community. And I know you said there seems to be a spike generally during the holidays. And as we get in more to the latter part of the year, we deal more with holidays or social gatherings. So I'm really kind of curious what this might even look like in the next few months.
Right. I, I think those are all
Were you able to hear?
real factors to consider and it will have an impact. And it also depends on what the broader community will do in terms of their behavior. Are people going to wear their mask and follow other layers of protection? So it's, it's hard to tell. That's what's really challenging about all of this and what I hope that keeping an eye on this. So it's all for consideration, honestly, I, because it's a lot to digest. And of course, the consequence of all of this is enormous, which I'm not telling you anything new. But yeah.
Right?
Sorry, forgive me, Katie, I have a quick question just about meeting weekly. I just want to make sure I'm not missing something. A lot of the metrics that we're talking about have like 14 day increments. And so I guess is waiting, meeting weekly necessary? Or should we try to meet, you know, every 14 days when there'll be another update on information?
Well, we are going to be updated daily. So that's the information that we do get, we look at it daily. I mean, it's up to you, I mean, this is what we were discussing as a, as a group, as a superintendent group. We really wanted to look and see at trends for planning purposes. We're really trying to see as much as we can where the trend is going, if at all possible. I mean, if you all don't want to, or you just want, if we start to see as a central office group, we could do that, we could notify you all. I, you know, I'm hoping.
It's, it's not that, Karen, I, I'm really trying to just understand like how often data is coming out. And, and what I've seen presented today was just like, you know, 14 days, 14 days. And so that's what I was like asking that question, but it's not to say that I don't want to. I'm just asking if we needed to.
Well, yeah, I guess trying to, if I'm looking at seven days, I want to know kind of ahead of time. I'm worried about planning, Nikki. I'm worried about trying to get ready to transition. And I know you want green, you're like, well, I don't have word by. I'm just kidding, but it's, I'm really concerned.
Do me like that, Karen, that's not.
We have to talk about it. But if it's yellow, does it look like it's yellow for a week? Or is it, are we going to see it for 14 weeks? I'm trying to say, maybe I'm just being like super cautious and I, I want to make sure that I can move people and I have to communicate with people. I'm seeing in my mind, planning ahead, like, okay, we got that seven down. I'm hoping maybe there's another seven and I can start planning now thinking, okay, it looks pretty good. We've seen this for this week, maybe we need to start planning and this is another 14. And if we do see 14, then we really need to say, all right, this is a thing. We now need to go to another stage of getting ready for this transition. Because in my mind, again, I've never done this before, we can't just do it like that. It's going to have to be in stages. And that was part of the thinking, if we see the trend moving in that direction, we can start staging out a transition. And I don't know exactly what that would look like, but I feel it would be problematic trying to move to a different tier. It wouldn't happen overnight, it just wouldn't. I, I don't think it would even happen in a week.
I would say from one, one side of the administrative perspective and working with the food service department, we have a three to four week lead time on the ordering of food. So this is, this data is going to be super helpful for us to sort of anticipate where the board might be leaning as far as their decision regarding the data and the spread around the community. Because we'll need to make sure that we can order our food to make sure that we have food in-house to serve our students when they do come back on site. So this is incredibly helpful data. And I guess to speak to both Karen and Nikki's points, I think that statistically, the two week spread is, is very significant. But also we have to look at, at how those changes are moving over time in that one week space of time as well, so that we can anticipate. We do have refrigerators, coolers, freezers in order to store some of that food. But some of that, some of those things need to be ordered well in advance, like our fresh greens and our fresh fruits and such, so that they are in, in-house when, when the board would, would make a decision to come back on site. So anyway, that's just a bit of an administrator's perspective on, on the district operational side. That's why this data is so significant.
Can I make a recommendation? I think that this is important data and I think that, I mean, I know that the administrators and your central office folks, you all have your plans in place for what it will look like to transition. But what you're looking for is the guidance of when to transition and being the preparedness prior to when we would make that decision. So the more frequently they could look at this data, I think is better. And if we could just do something standing every week where the board could gather to look at this data with the central office leaders, if you make it, you can make it. If you can't make it because of whatever commitment it might be, you don't make it. But this is important data. This is probably the biggest decision outside of, you know, who our next leader is going to be within the, the school this year. And I don't, I don't want to put a lot of time and distance in between the review of this data. And the more we can review it and the more, with more frequency, the more educated we also are to talk to our constituents that are constantly asking us this question about what transition looks like.
I would say that we start off with, with more frequency. And if we feel that we need to scale it back a little bit based on how the data comes in, that's fine. But since this is something new for all of us, we maybe start off more frequently and figure it out. And then, you know, we, we, we are a data-driven institution. We really do focus on data and what it means. So I'm confident that we'll, we'll figure out a rhythm with it. But I do think we, we start off figuring out at first how to, how to move forward.
I agree with, with those recommendations. I would say one other thing, Karen, I don't know, is Ed Plus or any entity starting to track or planning on tracking kind of the performance and what's going on with those districts like St. Charles and others that are, that are going, going in person so that in addition to the COVID case data, we could start to get the community input from districts that have actually gone back in person and how that's going. It would be interesting, that to me would be also a leading indicator for me to understand kind of what's working well, what's not, how's, how's transmission going within those buildings?
Yeah, that's a really good question and comment. And that was discussed in that subgroup, superintendents with the health professionals, trying to track what's happening. And that was one of the things that superintendents would like to have as a tool. And they bounced around the idea, I don't know if they're actually going to do it, but it was a recommendation made. So people are thinking that since we're starting from scratch. It's just interesting in some of those other areas, the, the things that they're not recording or they're not putting out to the public, it's just, it's just not the same in all the areas. But to speak to your point, yes, it's being discussed, I just hope it happens.
Great. While we have this as an action item, I think we'll be able to marinate a little bit on this up until that point. But appreciate the deep dive into the data, Karen.
Everyone, thank you so much, I appreciate it. And if you have other questions, like for Matt, if you want to know more, like like I appreciate, you know, two things coming from Nikki and Brandy, just shoot me an email, honestly, and I can get that answer for you. I'm happy to do whatever.
All right, um moving then to um admin communication on social emotional support.
Oh, let me, sorry.
Chris, I think you need to bring Megan into the meeting.
Sorry about that. I thought that I had done that. I missed. There you go, Megan.
Um, hello, everybody. Let me get my screen up for you. Okay, can everybody see that? Okay. All right, let's get going then. Um, I just wanna say I appreciate the time here tonight. I know the time is valuable. You have a very robust agenda. So I appreciate you carving out time for this conversation tonight. I'm Megan Boyer, Assistant Principal, very lucky Assistant Principal at MRHE. I also have the pleasure of working alongside Karen and Roxanna and our awesome district leadership team um on the district level for social emotional learning initiatives. Um, I do want to say before we even move in that I'm incredibly grateful to work for a district um that allows the time and space for these conversations to happen. So thank you for that. Um, keeping in mind that at MRH, we ensure educational equity and excellence for all has the theme of this presentation as we move forward for the considerations in the area of social emotional learning for our students, our staff, and our families. I'm gonna start with um this visual with some, some of you may or may not be familiar with. This is titled "The Pair of Aces," and this is actually a visual from Dr. Wendy Ellis out of Building Community Resilience Organization. Um, some of you on the call may or may not be familiar with the original ACEs Study or Adverse Childhood Experiences Study that was done in nineteen ninety-five. Um, it was definitely groundbreaking in nature in terms of understanding the impact that trauma has on individuals. I began my training in trauma several years ago, but the more and more I go, the more and more it evolves. And I think that that's becoming very clear. Um, about three years ago, I was fortunate enough to attend a pretty extensive conference in Philadelphia where that understanding was very much cemented um for me. So back to the visual, trauma can present itself in many ways. At the top pieces of the branches um within this visual, trauma may present itself in terms of abuse, addiction, mental illness, et cetera. But it's really at the roots that I want to draw everyone's attention tonight um as a means of laying the ground for our equity mindset and moving forward. Um, it's really those underlying systemic issues titled "The Adverse Community Environments" here um that can really lead to those ACEs outcomes displayed at the branches. And let me say that COVID nineteen and going through a global pandemic has absolutely been traumatic for all of us. If you've not been directly impacted, you have been indirectly so, and that's been very, very hard. And I I absolutely acknowledge that. However, I also feel that I have to draw attention to um the years and years of racial injustices that many of us, many are also facing. Um, this was brought to the forefront of our attention yet again in the most recent months across our country and even our world. Um, our staff, our students, our families have been faced with reoccurring trauma over these years. And some are calling this a dual or a double pandemic mentality. Um, and I wanna talk about that a little bit tonight as a means of informing our conversation and plans for moving forward. Because MRH has an obligation to continue um offering that safe and brave space for our students, staff, and family to continue these conversations, seek support, and move toward advocacy for that change that is necessary. So keeping that in mind, I want to move to move into how can we support the needs of all. Some major themes for consideration as we move forward tonight, as I mentioned, direct and vicarious trauma endured. There's going to need to be a shift in mindset. Um, I think we can agree that the well-being of our entire MRH community needs to be at the forefront of our minds. Um, student and family disengagement during the closure. Some of our our partners unfortunately might have had a lack of consistency or healthy interactions with others. Um, we will likely be faced with some learning loss upon reentry. And unfortunately, there may have been some difficulty accessing various resources for some of the members of our community. Likely, there will be some ongoing anxiety and worries too on part of our staff, our students, and our families as we attempt to navigate um our quote-unquote "new normal." Development of protocols for students and staff, whether that's virtually or in person. Um, how can we, again, replicate those support plans? What our communication systems can look like? Plans for follow-up, um thinking through flexible planning for social emotional learning supports, um and definitely intentional planning to infuse the two, social emotional learning within the academic realm um as they should be hand-in-hand. Intentional planning for ongoing consistency among tiers is also incredibly important um and maintaining interactions and traditions in a virtual, in a safe and/or virtual way. Um, we have an opportunity now to move from our reactive survival mode into more proactive planning. And we can really foster that staff and student relationship. And we have to address those feelings of isolation that that might be happening now and into the future to a degree. Um, and again, regardless of what tier we're in, there's going to be a great need for an established routine that is clear to everybody. So in preparation for tonight and just our plans moving forward in general, um of course, we utilize the district survey results um that were collected in June of twenty twenty. For the purposes of tonight, I I did not bring out all of the questions in that survey. Um, lucky for you, because it was a long one. Um, but I did pull the items that are pertinent to tonight's information. Um, the first two questions really were related to concerns about contracting COVID and the concerns about social emotional needs as a result of that shelter in place. And I think that you'll see parents and staff on both of those questions were both fairly uh close in agreement to their their level here. They had high um levels of agreement in terms of social emotional needs as a result of shelter in place. However, the students, it was quite a bit lower. Um, the next question asked a little bit about school personnel having checked in on students during the closure. This is pretty consistent across the board with parents, staff, and students. The next question dived in specifically into our counseling and/or student services staff. Um, this had a little bit of a split between the parties, uh parents, staff, and students. Parents agreed with that at about a fifty-four percent rate, staff at almost eighty. Students was twenty-five percent, but I also wanna draw attention that almost forty-five percent of them, this was not applicable to them or they didn't utilize those services. Um, and lastly, the ability to connect to other students. Um, you'll see pretty similar response with the adults within the survey, but students um felt like they connected with others at a seventy percent um agreement right there. I'm not going to read the overall summary to you, but some themes that jumped out to me um is that we need to begin with the adults. We have to make sure that our adults are feeling safe and supported and and so that they can move forward and support our students and the rest of our community. That was abundantly clear to me. In addition, I saw some some hopeful rays. Um, I think the data showed a bit just how resilient our students can be. And that serves as a place, as a really helpful building block to move forward. So I'm gonna start with the staff. Um, I know none of us, oh, probably most of us haven't been on a plane in a while. So we haven't seen that lovely "Put on your oxygen mask" presentation. But I am gonna use that analogy tonight because it's very applicable. Um, our MRH staff have shown, not only now, uh but over the years, that they are absolute superheroes in more ways than one. And I think right now, they need to hear it's okay to put away the capes for a minute. They need to hear that it's okay to not be okay. That shift in mindset has to occur uh for their overall well-being so that they can be at their best for the rest of our community. Transparency is going to be incredibly important and probably something you'll hear me say several times tonight. When we're faced with situations in which we have very little control, I think being open and honest and collaborative is just of the utmost importance. Um, thinking through repurposing of our time together, um just as you've done on your board meetings, we, our priorities might have shifted a bit. So we might wanna think about how that looks in our buildings while also developing and sticking to those necessary routines. Um, we have an excellent team of counselors and social workers um in our buildings. Um, they're incredible. And I think that we can tap into their expertise for our adult check-ins as well to ensure that our staff are in a good space. At the bottom of the presentate, or at the bottom of the slide, you're gonna see just a very simple ask. Ask the staff what they need. Because I think if I've learned anything during this closure, it's that I cannot assume that I know what someone else needs. Um, we have to get their input and their voice has to be at the table. So moving forward with staff support, some recommendations. Um, I'm gonna give a little bit of detail and context to this. So I think it's very important that we do gauge staff thoughts and feelings upon reentry, of course, um carve out that time, um consistent time to really monitor and support them. There's a couple of resources here that we're not necessarily gonna click through tonight, um but they are out of the International Institute of Restorative Practices um in which I was trained formally about four years ago. Um, Restorative Practices is an SEL core initiative at MRH. Um, and being mindful that maybe not everyone on the call is familiar. I'm gonna explain it just a little bit to you. So within this philosophy, you're gonna see practices of effective statements or questions as well as circles. Um, the utilization of effective statements and questions really allows for that common language um for the entire community um when expressing those personal deep feelings. It it also allows for clarification of boundaries, opportunities to provide feedback in a meaningful way, but also building empathy, which I think we can all agree is incredibly important now more than ever. Um, circles are a bit more formal. It's a more formal practice. It really allows for that safe space for those conversations to happen. They should be structured. They should be focused, nonjudgmental, and absolutely inclusive. So fortunately, the IIRP has released responsive responsive circle guidance um specific to COVID nineteen as well as advocacy for equity. Um, so these conversations can and probably should happen with our staff upon reentry to to gauge how they are and what we can do to support them. You'll see this on a similar slide later because this process can also be done with our students. Um, as you guys just finished doing, I think it's incredibly important to provide staff with the facts and the sources used to make decisions. Um, again, when we find ourselves in positions of high emotion and situations in which we have little control, I think it's incredibly important to ground ourselves in what we do know, um the facts, so that we can become as clear-headed as possible, if that's a thing during this time, um in order to make those decisions. Safety precautions, um I think we're doing a very excellent job with just continuing to make sure that that everybody feels comfortable and truly knows what they look like. What does that actually look like? Um, at MRH, we are fortunate to have um amazing partnerships, some of them being youth in need, who can offer counseling to our youth, our families. Again, I already mentioned our stellar counseling staff as well as other outside partnerships for staff support. And then, of course, our employee assistance program, which can offer similar um resources as well. Another new and evolving professional development opportunity, thank you, Roxanna, um is a partnership through SEED. So that stands for Social, Emotional, and Academic Development. Um, buildings can have access to these SEED coaches, coaches as needed, and they can cover a variety of things. It might be content-specific, uh maybe classroom best practices or strategies, um or even how to infuse SEL within academics, as I mentioned before. Now, when I get to the next part of building-level social-emotional learning leadership teams, which is quite the tongue-twister, um when I talk about that, I'm I'm talking about um within each building, there's a team of people who, of course, collaborate and discuss supportive measures for students and staff alike. Obviously, that's incredibly important now, um as it has been in the past. But I think it's important to review what was. What did those teams look like? Um, and how might that need to shift with our priorities now and make those changes that need to be made? Um, it's always a goal of mine to work toward building capacity, obviously, with our staff, because the benefits of that only trickle down to our students. The next two, self-care, it's two words, but it sure packs a punch. And I think it's incredibly important right now. Um, our MRH educators and staff put their heart and soul into everything that they do, and we love them for that. Um, but we also need to be sure that we're supporting them and that we're there with them every step of the way. Um, lots of opportunities can be had with that, some of them being through our trust wellness partnership. Mr. Ed Rich, coincidentally, just sent that out. Um, in the past, we've had things like yoga and mindfulness, massages. Obviously, that's gonna look a little bit different now, but they're already uh thinking through and releasing virtual options for that. And with anything, consistency and fidelity of supports is a must. Um, so moving through best practices for next steps to continue thinking through with admin leadership, um we're gonna need to continue to engage staff in implementation decisions regarding district and building level plans, um engage internal and external resources to meet the emerging and probably ever-changing staff needs, promote staff, use of staff benefits, as I mentioned, um and of course, staff development specific uh to identified building needs. We're gonna move next now to our student and family supports. Again, I'm not gonna go into this first piece in detail as I did prior, um but this process can be used with our students as well. I think it's also important to have a commitment to cohort stability as best as we possibly can, um given the the shifts that that are occurring and and could occur, whether that's shifting among tiers, schedules, rosters, things of that nature. Um, being as intentional as we can to ensure that there are student-to-student connections, student-to-staff, and even staff-to-staff. Um, I can attest that every building is working as hard as they can to make sure that that is happening with the best interest of everybody at heart. Um, just as I mentioned, um partnerships with our district resources for staff. The same goes for our kiddos and our families. Strong partnerships and communication with families is must. I think that that's something that we do really well here. MRH absolutely has that family feel. Um, but I want that, we need to make sure that that is continuing on a consistent basis. And then it's really a circle of communication so that we're all on the same page and continuing to move forward together. Uh, resource availability is a big thing, just pointing them in the right direction. I know that Vince and his team put together a really great, robust list of resources during the closure that was posted on the website and updated frequently. Um, and I think continuing to do things like that and referring to it and and making that known is important. And of course, we have to get their input just as we do with our staff. We're gonna have to think outside the box. I think we know this by now, whether we're in person or virtual. Um, but this first bullet here definitely means a lot to me. Classroom and school-wide connections, traditions, and celebrations. Um, when we had our closure and we were all kind of living in survival mode, um some of these things didn't necessarily happen in the way that they always have. And I think now, again, we have that opportunity to move from reactive to proactive. And having these things in place in a different way is incredibly important. Um, these are the things that make school an experience, and these are the things that make memories for our kids and for our staff. They're the reason they get out of bed. When I think about this, I think of MRH gathering every Friday. And I certainly am bummed. I'm not gonna be on the stage doing that and hanging with my peeps every Friday. But I think that we have an opportunity to be creative and make sure these things are happening in some capacity. Um, it's incredibly important too to um have increased opportunities for both movement and just healthy practices in general. Um, some example ideas that could potentially be done if and when we return to tier two, perhaps utilizing our outside spaces um for therapeutic stations of sorts um as a way for students to express themselves in another way, whether that's music or art, movement, mindfulness, yoga. Um, this can also, of course, happen virtually. Developing buddy classrooms for increased social interactions. This is something that already happens. Um, again, I think something that we do really well. But just increasing that peer support, increasing um that opportunity for our kiddos. This might be two grade-level classes buddying up. It might be a vertical type of scenario. Um, but again, these things can be done virtually. They can uh participate in lots of things together, but um increased peer-to-peer support and interaction and just adding that extra layer of support, um I think would do a lot of good. Um, of course, with students and families, um as new shifts might occur or new teachers come into play, I think opportunities for home visits, our home visit initiative, needs to continue to provide those connections. Just as we do, whether we're in the physical sense, the brick-and-mortar building or behind the screen, we really, really, really need to be intentional about teaching these new routines. Just as we would teach math and reading and science and all of the things, we've got to teach our kiddos what this looks like and what we expect of them under these circumstances, but on the other hand, what do they expect from us, and what do they need from us to be at their very, very best? So that definitely goes both ways. Consistency and routine, I probably have said 20 times already, but I'm going to continue to advocate for that quite a lot, because I think our students really crave this. And again, I mentioned before, when we're in scenarios that are out of our control, what we do have control of is incredibly important. And I think our kids and adults alike really crave and need that to be at their best. As much FaceTime as possible, whether it's in this format or another, really fosters that relationship. And must continue, no matter what tier we're in. And utilizing staff mentors for students in need. Again, this is something that we do naturally, and we do it very, very well. The reason I wanted to point this out tonight is because we do rely on our counseling staff and our social workers and our social emotional support team quite often, because their expertise in the field, and we thank them for that. But I also want to be cautious on leaning on certain people too, too much, because we're all under a lot. And students might have a connection with an adult that they've already built, and so we can be creative with that, it could be any adult within the building. And we could utilize that for a mentor system of sorts. So next steps to think through. We've got to teach those coping strategies and skills needed in a virtual environment. Of course, continuing to provide peer-to-peer support and opportunities for student leadership. Family buddy systems is just a wonderin' of mine, and again, something we naturally do in our district, again, because we are so small and it is the family feel. But I wanted to draw attention to this, just again, as an extra layer of support for our families. Because sometimes families might feel a little bit more comfortable or willing to be vulnerable with another family in a similar situation. And so, thinking through a system of sorts might be a helpful additional connection for them. Of course, continuing to promote resources and ensure access for social, emotional well-being. And being very intentional and proactive, like I mentioned before, we have an opportunity to shift from reactive now to proactive. And really ensure that the student and family check-ins are happening at the building level. And again, ensuring that it's a circle of communication and we're all on the same page together. All right, this brings me to our continued partnership with Panorama. And I'm mindful that not everyone on the call may know what this is. So last school year, which, what school year we had, we did begin this process with them, and really, it was just a chance to kind of dip our toe into the pool and learn what the organization could provide for us. A definition of what the organization does is here for you, but essentially, they help to collect and analyze data for social, emotional learning. School climate, to help with staff and family engagement. Our work so far has consisted of development of social, emotional leadership teams, as I mentioned in a prior slide. We've also done student, family, and staff surveys, of course, taken those surveys to review data, which would then inform our goals for the 2021 school year. Messaging to staff has been around common language for the SEL competencies. And how can we evolve, how can we continue with this process? I think it's probably quite obvious that those teams, again, will need to be revisited as our priorities have shifted a bit. We have to have time for intentional learning on part of our staff, none of this is new, we do this and we do this very, very well. But making sure that it's happening consistently and that we're all on this journey together, and I think Panorama can help us continue to do that. The building level goals that I mentioned earlier likely will change. We set goals for ourselves for this year, but we might need to shift and ensure that we're really prioritizing in that realm. And last but not least, and probably most importantly so, consistent training on the competencies, on the surveys, how to implement, what does the timeline look like? So that we can use that data to really inform our action planning, I think will be key. So I'm ending not with anything groundbreaking, I'm sure, but I think we need to call out the fact that this is going to be a marathon. I have to tell myself that probably every day. And, you know, we have to continue to lean on each other and really continue with honest, open conversations. We cannot do this in silos, we cannot do this alone, we have to do it together. I hope a theme that has emerged several times throughout the presentation is that staff, student, family, community, everybody's voice is vital to our planning, we have to have all stakeholders represented. And they have got to be a part of the process. Without getting too mushy, MRH is a special place, I think that we know this. And I do believe that we have an opportunity here to continue to be innovative, and we can really come out of this with a greater purpose. So with that, I will say, remaining focused on our mission for educational equity and excellence for all, even if it's from afar. And I think that that will be all right. So that's what I've got for you tonight, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I am particularly concerned about the stress on teachers and the adults in the building. I know we're all keeping it together, right, but we're, you know, only human. So I appreciate that there's some intentionality specifically around supporting teachers. Can you talk a little bit about how we're just going to like, keep that, you know, evergreen to? I mean, I think folks are in their own coping strategies, you know, may not realize they need something until they really need it, or, you know, maybe they needed it three weeks ago, you know, sort of thing. So just, again, wanting to be really cognizant of the uncharted waters we are in right now.
I think what I would say for that is the biggest piece is that as district leadership, building leadership, we have to model that. I think that that's the most important piece here. You know, in order for them to feel safe and to feel okay, to have that shift in mindset and to prioritize their own needs. We have to show them that that's okay. I think that that's a really, really big piece of it, and I think coming back to and reviewing frequently what resources they do have available for them, and making sure that, again, we have to be intentional about it, and we have to get their input. I think that's number one as well, asking them what they need and how can we collaborate to make sure that they get that. I know that that's a little bit of a vague answer, but I do think that it starts with us and modeling.
And I would just, I would just add, the principals have been really great about that over the last few months. Having intentional meetings, having optional meetings that people could drop in on every time topics are raised. You know, we're going to have a check-in meeting at 1:00, come if you want, come if you can. Once we're back in session, that will continue and probably formalize a little bit, but as Megan said, giving them time and space to have voice. Slowing down and checking in, making sure that we're adding spaces in the agendas to listen to feedback and ask questions. So those are all things that are happening and will continue to happen, because we are going to have to just lean on each other to get through this, and so I think that intentionality is really the key.
I would just sort of add from a board perspective, I think one of the ways and the structures we can utilize a little differently and a little more creatively, Katie, to your point about making this evergreen, and it won't be immediate, but it could be ongoing, is our, as our compensation benefits task force initiatives, and really making sure that the voice of the staff is heard in that arena, so that we, it's where we kind of indicate with dollars and cents what we're kind of committing to, not just sort of salary scales, but also the benefits piece of this, the mental health and well-being and supports that I don't know, you know, if we can identify, like you said, like, how to identify, you know, ahead of time, but certainly, I think we as a board I think I speak for the board that we're ready and willing to listen, to provide those types of supports, both in an ongoing way and and, you know, beyond even this, this year, you know, something that this could have some long-ranging effects. So I appreciate the leadership in each building doing that, I appreciate the voice of the staff, and I think we as a board just wanted to, I think, reiterate that this is something we want to definitely hear about and continue to learn about and figure out how we can provide their necessary supports to make a very challenging situation just a little bit better.
Yeah, I would, and Frances, thank you, that was lovely, I also you know, if we're, we're, you know, apparently voicing tonight, new regular updates we want. I think both, you know, a regular update about the adults in the building, but also, you know, how, how our kids, you know, writ large are doing. I mean, obviously, we don't go into individual kid detail, but I think if we are starting to see some trends or some unusual patterns, you know, with things that maybe have gone unaddressed during stay-at-home or just new stresses that are coming on. You know, in this new reality, I think, yeah, the board would, would want to hear about that, too.
Also, can we share positive things in some of the?
Oh, yeah. Please do.
That we're doing, because I'm really excited about this SEED grant that we have, and how much was it, is it 100?
About $150,000.
Yeah, and so this is just working with the new dean there, he's not that new anymore, but at St. Louis University and making those connections and working it out, you know, so even in COVID times, I'm working it out. And then passed about time to Roxanna, and I appreciate her taking the lead in COVID times. It's a lot of work, y'all, start a new relationship, and I appreciate her, because I think this is a good match for us, and it's perfect timing, so, thank you all. And Megan, you are a rock star. I just, oh, y'all, I'm having a moment. You're doing really good work, and I'm so proud of you, so, well done.
Thank you.
All right.
Right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Right, HR planning.
Sure, so just want to give a brief update of what's going on in the world of HR. We had my great privilege to have new teacher orientation the last two days, turned them over to the building for tomorrow. But we have hired a really stellar group of individuals, I know I say that every year, but it's so exciting to get to know them and work with them in small groups, and really, you know, our first day of training is always going through the things MRH cares about and why we do what we do, and and we have a long equity conversation, and just listening to them kind of unpack and open up has been super, super exciting. So you should feel really good about the crop of new teachers that we have. We spent all day today, Rachel and I, going through our tech systems, and most of the day in its learning, and unpacking what virtual instruction will look like. And I think they're really excited to get started. So that's all off and running and going really well. Also, in HR world, we're working with a handful of folks around the FCCRA leaves, because, you know, other schools have closed as well, and so we have childcare issues. And so we're working through available leaves under the law and trying to help folks get themselves situated so that, so that their situations are workable for families. We also have a handful of accommodation requests that we're making, so we're in the process of working through some ADA and accommodation issues for folks that might have special health concerns during COVID. Another thing that you'll be actually seeing tonight, we've gone through every extra duty that we would normally have in the building and worked with those sponsors to determine what can we do virtually, so that kids still have opportunities. So there's a number of our clubs and programs that will be moving forward virtually, which ones we needed to put on hold until we can be in a Tier Two. And then some of which we haven't quite figured out how to make happen in this new environment. So we've spent some time with all the principals and the teachers of those programs, trying to make positive changes, so that kids can have some good experiences, even if we are all virtual. Another pressing issue that we've been working on with Kelly Services is what happens when we need substitutes. And all of the buildings are making plans, because in the, in the Tier Three All Distance Learning program, we will not be using daily Kelly subs, instead, teachers will be making plans and teams will be covering, because we don't know how to get individual subs with pass codes and all of the things they need in our systems. We will still use Kelly for our midterm and our long-term subs, when we can do training and get the security provisions worked out. So there's been a lot of logistics with that that we're working on, but we feel fairly good. And then on the state front, I don't know if you've been seeing what's happening, but they have made two provisions that will be very helpful for us when we're back on site and we need to find substitutes. So one provision is that all retired teachers no longer have hour caps, they can sub for us as much as they want in a given year, which will be really helpful. And another is a alternative certification for subs, so we can now allow subs who don't necessarily have all the college hour requirements, we can get them certified if the district is willing to do intensive training with those cohorts of folks. So if we get in a situation where we don't have enough available subs, we can onboard other folks who otherwise would be well-qualified. So we have a couple workarounds that have not been available to us in the past. And then finally, I know that you were sent as part of the district all email, but I've also attached our staff COVID handbook. So we've been working on that throughout the task force for the summer, but really wanted to get that out, because it needed to address a lot of questions that staff members had. And I've been able to do small group conversations and staff meetings and allow folks to talk directly about their questions. And so we've been able to make that a very interactive and positive process, so that's kind of where we are in the world of HR and COVID.
Any questions or concerns there? Thanks, Roxanna. Next update is on Special Education Services, welcome, Mr. Gleason and Mr. Estrada. Did we lose?
My apologies, I'm not sure what happened to my connection just there. Good evening all. This is Ben Gleason, the Special Education Coordinator for the district. And I do want to thank you for inviting me to speak about the plans we've been making for the provision of Special Education Services. Because as you all know, our students who receive Special Education Services, there's a good chance that they will be disproportionately impacted by what's going on at this point in our community and in our particular district here in MRH. But we are taking steps to ensure that all students receive a positive beneficial education this school year. So my purpose tonight is to share a little bit of background about the process for this school year. I want to provide a little bit of information for you about the kinds of Special Education Services that SSD staff will be providing. And then finally, to share a little bit of information about students who are in the process of being evaluated or reevaluated for Special Education eligibility. All along, going back really to spring break, we've been engaged in a collaborative planning process. Back then, of course, we were initially reacting to the situation that was changing in our community. But those initial conversations and that collaboration really did lend itself to learning and growing, and that. And that and that has helped us in in our planning for this school year. We've had a number of collaborative efforts, and and by that I mean collaborative among MRH and SSD. Dr. Hall has led her administrative team, you know, on a virtually weekly basis. We were together. We've been planning with principals regarding individual building plans. We've talked quite a bit about the option two virtual academy and how special ed would be involved in in that. We've engaged with parents on three occasions so far with our Special Education Services forums. Our staff have been included in some of the blended learning training that Mrs. Meacham has been sharing with staff. And we are working to deliver training for our staff specifically in best practices regarding special ed provision in this new environment. We've also received feedback from students and families as well as staff. So we've engaged with quite a few folks in order to to get us to where we are now. Now, this slide, I I hesitated to to put it because obviously, as the board, you are well aware of what the options are here in MRH. But the point of this slide really is to just to let you all know that no matter which option families choose for their children, Special Education Services are available. Those services may look different in the different options, but but we don't need to worry that students will go without services no matter what option choices selected, and and that is right for each individual family. In order to provide the services that our students need and in order to effectively collaborate, we have a lot of staff, a lot of different roles represented that will be involved in supporting our students as well as their families and collaborating with the the wide variety of MRH general education staff. Of course, I am the the Lead Area Coordinator. My role will be to be available daily to SSD and MRH staff, students and families to provide support, to problem solve. Of course, I will continue to to supervise Special Ed staff and programs and to support our staff and help them in continuing to develop to develop their skills so that we're providing high quality services to our students. We also have a number of teachers who also function as case managers. And those case managers really are the person who who will be coordinating the services that are provided to our our students, and they're the primary contact or a family regarding their child's services. The case managers will be developing something called a distance learning plan for each child. And in a in a few minutes, we will talk a little bit more about what those distance learning plans are and why we have them. And then, of course, the teachers will be providing direct instruction, lessons, assignments through the distance learning format that specifically continue to address students' IEP goals and and make sure students are still accessing course and grade level standards. We also have a number of related service providers that work alongside case managers to provide related services. The instruction, the support, again, that's outlined in students' IEPs. We have a great group of paraprofessionals or teacher assistants. And those those folks will support the overall instructional program in various ways, preparing materials, collecting data, supporting live sessions and small groups. One thing that's that's exciting in the spring, I would say, are honestly, our paraprofessionals were a little bit underutilized. But we've we've rethought and reimagined the role that they can play. And so they'll be an important part of our instructional program moving forward. For some folks, not not too many in our district, we will also be providing applied behavioral analysis support and instruction. And then behind the scenes, we have some folks who are facilitators and are effective practice specialists. Those are folks who can support kind of in the background with best practices, supporting our staff as well. So I briefly mentioned just a second ago, distance learning plans. And distance learning plans are expected by the Development Department of Elementary and Secondary Education when a school or a district is is in a distance or learning or virtual learning format. Those plans are based on and and grounded in the IEP document itself. And basically, the distance learning plan interprets the IEP when we are in a a non traditional format like we find ourselves now. The distance learning plans address students' goals, their services, what accommodations and modifications will be needed in the distance learning environment, access to curriculum as well as other resources that may be available to support students and families as they engage with with their education. The distance learning plans also outline how services will be provided. Of course, like other staff members, we will offer a direct or live or synchronous services. You know, you can choose your language there. We'll also provide lessons and activities. Sometimes we call those asynchronous through the It's Learning platform. Our youth might call them on demand. You can access them when it makes sense for for you or your family. We'll also provide support of general education instruction as well as consultation. The learning plans themselves, as I mentioned, will be developed by the case managers, but not in isolation. They'll be developed in consultation and collaboration with other special ed teachers, with related service providers, general education teachers, and of course, with our families. And the plans don't require a formal meeting to be developed. We can work with families in ways that make sense for for each family to get the plans developed. Those plans will then be reviewed every two weeks. And if needed, we will adjust them and then reshare those with all all the stakeholders for that particular child. I've used the term related services, and I just want to make sure folks are aware of what I mean by related services. Specifically, I'm talking about speech therapy, language therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and social work services. At this point, we will be providing those services via telepractice. And that's over Zoom like like others will be using. And the related service providers will work with the case manager to to coordinate each child's overall program and instruction and and this particular schedule of when those services will be provided. Again, we'll we'll be offering direct scheduled live synchronous sessions. And the sessions and activities will be comparable to the number of service minutes indicated in the IEP. So if a child's IEP says that the the child needs sixty minutes a week of speech therapy, then we would be providing that same amount of of therapy in the distance learning format. And our related services providers, just like our teachers, will have daily office hours throughout the week to be of support to parents and families as they navigate the distance learning environment. Last spring, when we closed down move to close down our buildings, I should say, and moved to the distance learning format, the evaluation process essentially stopped. You know, it was an emergency situation, and so we find ourselves with students who were set to be evaluated for Special Education eligibility or who were in the process of being evaluated. So at this point, SSD is working on and close to finalizing some plans that will allow evaluations to begin again and move forward in a way that's compliant with state and federal expectations and that, most importantly, lead to good, reliable results that can be obtained in a in a safe way for all. Don't know. Again, I don't know that I need to say this, but you know, plans continue to evolve as information changes and develops. And as needed, I'm more than happy to provide additional updates. And I I want to make sure that you, as the board, are aware and that any families who are are joining us this evening, I want them to know that we encourage them as often as necessary to contact their child's case manager or me for any additional information or support that we might be able to provide. You know, we are very well aware, as Mrs. Boyer mentioned in her presentation, that this is a very challenging and trying time for students and families alike. So our goal is to be of as much benefit and support for our families as we can possibly be. Of course, we have, in addition to our staff and and knowledge and expertise and their their love of the kids, we also have some additional resources, some of which are found on the MRH website. There are a lot of resources available on the SSD website. SSD, if you're not aware, has an Instructional Resource Center, which is a learning lending library located at our central office. Because of the health situation, we're not open for just walk in browsing. But families can still look online to see what resources, materials, et cetera, are available. And there's a way that families can still access those materials in a in a safe manner. We also have a Parent Education and Diversity Awareness Department. Our contact specific to MRH is Deborah Fiasco. And she can be of great benefit to families in terms of connecting them with resources in our community for a variety of of needs. Just so you all know, our special ed staff are on a slightly different schedule than the MRH staff. Our special ed staff do return Monday, the twenty fourth. So at that point, they will formally begin their work. You know, getting ready for the school year. Although I can tell you today, I ran into multiple staff members. I was visiting a number of buildings and they were they were there working, preparing. So so our staff will be ready to go. I also want to just acknowledge that our parents are like like many people are experiencing some uncertainty, some questions, some concerns. And I know some of those concerns have been shared with the board. Some parents have reached out to me as well. Those concerns that I've received have fallen into four main areas. One, families have reached out about evaluations that that need to be completed. They've reached out about IEPs that need to be held. They've reached out about with concerns about instruction and what the services will look like that their child will receive. And they've also expressed the need for additional support for them. Because as we know, many of our parents, especially for some of our younger children, they've been, you know, put into the role of home teacher alongside our own staff. So they they may need some support. So I I wanted to touch a little bit more on each of those four areas. I addressed a little bit earlier, the the delayed evaluations. At the preschool level, a plan is already in place for moving forward with evaluations. Families have received information about next steps. And then, as I mentioned earlier, for K through twelve, our executive leadership team at the district is close to finalizing a plan where we would be able to begin evaluating students again again, in a reliable, valid, compliant manner and in a way that ensures safety for staff and students alike. In terms of a next step, once that plan is finalized, we will be reaching out to families who are anticipating the the evaluations to continue, to let them know, you know, what that process will look like and, you know, approximate timelines when they might expect the evaluation to happen for their son or daughter. In terms of IEP meetings that were delayed, those actually happened for a number of reasons. We did pause on IEPs for a while during the spring. And so we got backed up in terms of of being able to hold some of those. Some families didn't feel comfortable holding an IEP at that time, so we, you know, listened and and held off. At this point now, we are moving forward with holding IEPs. We even have some that are scheduled for next week prior to the start of school. What's, I think, hopefully comforting to folks is that even when an IEP is delayed, services continue on without interruption. So there isn't a concern there in terms of, you know, services stopping until an IEP can be team can reconvene. So our next step really is is to look at our list of IEPs that need to be held right away, and case managers will be reaching out to families to get those meetings scheduled. A lot of parents, you know, are concerned about, you know, how their child will be instructed, how they'll receive their services. And so we have a number of ways that we are improving what we're going to be able to offer this school year. As I mentioned before, each child will have a distance learning plan. Services will be provided from preschool through twelfth grade. So even though the general education preschool program is on pause for the moment, the special ed staff at at the preschool level will be serving our preschoolers as well. We'll increase our use of live synchronous sessions. We'll increase our provision of the related services that are in a child's IEP. We're increasing the use of assistive technology extensions. You know, there was some difficulty that some students had with, you know, not being able to read items within its learning. There are some extensions that are available to students and we'll make those available so that the access to the resources being provided is greater. As needed, materials can be sent home to support instruction. You know, with some of our younger students, I don't know if if you all are familiar with something called social stories, but they're they're short stories that we read with kids or parents can read with their children to help them understand different situations or scenarios. So we have some social stories ready to go that we'll be sharing with families, you know, that will help students understand a little bit more about, hey, we're not able to be in school. will help students understand a little bit more about, hey, we're not able to be in school right now. How do we, you know, how do we appropriately participate in online learning and those kinds of things? And then, of course, we are providing ongoing professional learning opportunities, opportunities for our staff in terms of effective online instruction. And really what, a lot of what that boils down to is not getting rid of all of the best practices that we know and we've used in the, the brick and mortar setting, but thinking carefully about how those translate into the virtual environment. So in terms of next steps, we are going to be requesting parent permission for online instruction. And the reason for that is, you know, when we are essentially in students' homes, there's, there's a chance that student's special education eligibility status is revealed in other people's homes. So we're, we're taking that step to address some confidentiality issues. I'll be continuing to monitor instruction and provide feedback and support to our staff. You know, we'll continue to receive parent feedback and adjust accordingly. And then we're planning to offer a fourth parent forum shortly after the school year starts as a way to, you know, more formally invite parents to, to give us feedback so that we have some ongoing input once school has started. And then the final area of concern that's come my way is support for our, our parents and our families. One thing that should be of great benefit that, you know, Mrs. Meacham is leading is more consistent use of its learning so that we're all on the same page. We will offer office hours to help with its learning, to offer suggestions for home supports. You know, because again, as I mentioned, families have been thrust into the role of, you know, assisting as a, as a teaching partner. So they may need some additional support from us to feel confident or more confident in that area. And then again, the resources that I mentioned through SSD, the instructional resource center, the parent education and diversity awareness department are available. So we look forward to continuing to receive feedback from parents so that we can do everything we can to support them and their students. Are there any questions?
Hi Ben, I thank you so much for this presentation. I, I have about two questions. First, is SSD having discussions about what will happen if virtual learning does not work for? Are, are students that are a part of SSD, like how will we be able to continue to give them what they need if virtual doesn't work for them?
Yeah. So the way that special school district works is of course partnership with each of the local school districts. So, you know, as as you all, as the board determine, you know, what tier we are in, SSD follows accordingly. But to, to answer your question more directly, that will actually come up in Mr. Estrada's presentation next regarding the consideration for, you know, possibly bringing students onto campus in, in small groups. So that is a consideration. It is happening district by district. Some districts are not moving forward with any sort of plan like that and others like ourselves are in the consideration and thinking stages about what that could look like.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is, children that have IEPs that deal with like social learning, how is that going to work, you know, in the virtual group aspect for them?
Sure. So there are, you know, we, we work primarily in small groups. And, you know, teachers will be still teaching about and reinforcing appropriate social skills through, through lessons. Part of that will be honestly learning about what it's like to, to interact in the virtual environment. That's a different set of skills than, than when you're in person. We have some additional resources that we've purchased. Particularly, I'm thinking of a subscription to a program called Everyday Speech. And that offers real videos of social interactions. And those kind of serve as a jumping off point for discussion about, you know, what are, you know, appropriate social interactions, what are unexpected behaviors? Those kinds of things. So that's some, that's a tool that's at our disposal. For the secondary level, with some of our students, we will be starting to use a program called Y-try, which is a social emotional learning curriculum. And so that will be of support. We also potentially may have the opportunity to form some small groups. You know, kind of outside of the, the confines of specific IEP services where we might be able to have small groups of students. Again, it would be online. But to get together in a more informal manner. And that's something that, you know, our, our TAs might be able to assist with. So that's another idea of how we can continue to support the social skill development, the social emotional learning of our students.
Thank you, Ben. I appreciate you.
Sure, thank you.
How will the process be communicated to the parents? Like, I'm assuming it can be slightly different depending on if they selected all virtual for the semester, if they're following the tiers. And in addition, I, I know with my special needs kids, they don't always know what the calendar is. And so I have to be aware of it so that I can remind them. So how is that being communicated to the parents and, and when do you expect that to be communicated to the parents?
Sure. So that will be communicated through the distance learning plan process. And we are, at the, at the secondary level, the, the courses will be provided at the time that they're scheduled according to the school-wide schedule. What will not be reflected in the school-wide schedule are those related services. Because those don't show up on student schedules. So your case manager and the related service providers would be you know, contacting you directly to share that information. I would anticipate that it would be probably late next week by the time those schedules are, are developed. You know, because staff come back Monday. The MRH Janet teachers come back Wednesday. And so they need a little bit of time to, to get those together. Of course, we're going to try and get those completed as quickly as possible so families can start planning accordingly.
Thank you.
Sure. Well, thank you very much. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak to you about special education. And it, it just, it just goes to the point of us being an inclusive collaborative community that cares about the achievement of all of our, our children. So I appreciate your time and your attention to, to this segment of our community.
Thank you, Ben. And really what he has shared in a big macro view of what the framework's going to be for SSD, he's teeing up really what we could do since they're kind of partners in the work with special education. With Vince taking the lead, the liaison for MRH. He kind of, Ben mentioned potentially the learning pod, special groups here, here at MRH. So thank you very much thoroughly explaining what our programming looks like, what has to be pivoting in this virtual world. So thank you, Ben, Ben, very much. And now Vince, can you just kind of unfold what we're thinking right now?
Well, I think since Ben was on a roll, I think she should just continue with my presentation.
All right, tee up the slides.
I did want to tell the school board two things. One, I was just amazed at your capacity to absorb all this information in such a long format. So thank you for that. Secondly, I was trying to find a setting that would inspire me to speak to the board. So I did come to the R and D tonight. And I'm speaking to you from your former home. Hope to help you guys return here someday. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So live from the R and D. Can you guys see that? Oh, great. Well, again, well, thank you for giving the opportunity to speak. I know it's getting long and, long in the evening. What I'm sharing with you is our best thanking today on August 20th, 2020, about how to provide intervention supports in our distance learning virtual instructional world. I use both those terms because distance learning is for the students that are in our kind of option one program. And then the virtual learning is for students that have chosen option two. It was a huge collaborative process. When I last attended a board meeting, I, I volunteered to pull this together sort of like whimsically, like this would be no big deal, but I realized this was quite, quite a daunting and important project. Extremely important for our students and families and staff. So I really dug in and I leaned heavily on my teammates. I list them there. So people know who kind of helped shape this presentation. I hope I do justice as their spokesperson, recognizing that I'm speaking for the K-12 instructional community and individual buildings. There's some overarching supports that you'll see consistent throughout the buildings themselves. And there'll also be some individual building differences. I, I know that families and students are understandably anxious and worried about what this will look like this year. Given what happened in the spring and the suddenness of that. And I know that the proof's in the pudding, you know, once we start September 1st. But I do feel hopeful that we had an opportunity to plan and put in a lot of structures that will already automatically embed a lot of intervention supports. So the need for additional support is hopefully less. That's really the, the hope and the thoughts. But by the way, I just noticed when I was typing this out, there's a lot of doctors in the house. Not sure what I'm doing presenting without my PhD, but I'll do my best. So real quickly, just to kind of summarize, there were some obvious intervention challenges that we faced in the spring. Because of our quick pivot to the virtual learning and implementing and utilizing digital curriculum, particularly K-6, where we had to really turn around getting its learning up and running, training teachers on that and training young students who hadn't used Chromebooks much and their families to really access its learning. It was an incredibly daunting task. So there were some challenges that structurally and systemically. There are also some structural and systemic challenges around technology. Video and conferencing, while some of us had been zooming, it was relatively new to most of us. Now we're sort of quasi experts putting up background screens, et cetera. But in March, if you remember, where's my link? Are you on mute? I mean, if I had a dollar for every time I heard you're on mute, I'd be a millionaire. But it was a learning, it was a new tool for all of us. And our capacity to use Zoom, we weren't using it because we had some privacy concerns. And we tried different platforms that were okay, but probably not as effective. Access devices was limited. We did our best and rolled those out. And we had to scramble and ensure that students had Wi-Fi access. Again, there was some delay and lag. So our ability to kind of be responsive, while impressive in terms of effort, we, there were some delays in terms of kids' access to learning. I think the biggest thing, and this is probably from my work as a social worker, is that the stay-at-home orders really limited. One of the best tools we have in our toolbox at MRH and that's the ability to go to people's homes. You know, we're a tiny district, three square miles. And if we're working out of these buildings and we need to go see a kid or a family, we're able to do that quickly. And that just was not in our toolbox this past spring. But going into the fall, we have built back in some really strong structural systemic supports. And Rox, I mean, this is, I'm just reporting on the work of my teammates. Roxanne and her team, curriculum coaches, instructional team who do a lot of work behind the scenes. So now there's distance learning coaches in all the buildings and all the grade levels, which will help their teammates utilize best practices around distance learning. I think the biggest improvement you'll see is a regular schedule for students with, with regular video conferencing so they can see teachers and classmates. And they'll get a better rhythm to their learning, which I think is what we were starving for in the spring. Those are huge structural systemic changes that I think will hopefully reduce some of the need for additional interventions. And our technology, we've made some, we've been able to do some improvements around technology structures. We're going to be able to use Zoom now. I think it is proven to be probably the best platform for us. We're going to have access to live and recorded lessons and use in swivel cams. We will have device accesses eventually for all students K-12. We're nearly there waiting for some to come in. And we did a survey early this year to figure out who needed Wi-Fi access. So those hotspots are ready to go day one. The thing I'm most excited about is we're not currently limited by a stay-at-home order. So we are ready to do ports visits and front yard visits if we need to outreach families. So those are some structural things that are in place for all the buildings. But again, you know, one of the things that helped when I talked to Roxanne about this presentation is I was kind of stuck in the weeds a little bit. Is she helped me really think about what is our practice before COVID-19? How do we support, how do we support students before there was a pandemic? And I'm like, oh yeah, let's just build from that. So what we do in all the buildings is we have some level of building level RTI intervention teams that monitor data, monitor student progress regularly to see who needs extra help. And that's what we're going to do now in the virtual setting as well. Looking at data, looking at referrals, looking at kids that are struggling and seeing what we can put in place for them. The composition of those teams typically are building administrators and counselors and interventionists and faculty members when they're available. So it's kind of a good holistic, multiple lens approach. And we look at multiple data points, attendance, but in the virtual learning, it'll be the level of engagement, assignment completion, when they're in, are they academically engaged, social emotional function, which will be difficult to assess in the virtual learning. So we'll rely on parents to see how they're doing with that, looking at assessment scores, grades, typical things. To be able to track kids that may need some additional interventions. So we're actually going to use our best practices that we had before we were shut down, you know, to kind of move forward to identify kids who might need additional interventions in this period. And I, I was impressed when I did my tour of the buildings and talked with all the building administrators about how thoughtful they were, not only in terms of building in some overall structures to make the virtual distance learning experience better, but they, in addition, they put layers of interventions already built in as well. Because when school was open, we had built in interventions. We had math and reading support groups. We had social emotional groups. We had all kinds of things available to students that were as part of the regular day. And they figured out a way to embed that in the fall that was not present in the spring. For example, at the, all the way through the, let's see. So all the way through the elementary, high school, there's going to be regular scheduled intervention time. So if they have that as a class, it'll be part of their regular schedule. They're going to have, the MRH elementary is going to have hours devoted to support and practice so they can access their teachers at that time. The ECC has deployed their staff to, they're going to build in team talk classes K through two. So they're embedding throughout their kindergarten through second grade program, small group instruction. Essentially, everyone's getting academic interventions, which I think is actually so appropriate for those young kids. They'll have, they'll be working in groups of eight to 10 with a certified teacher, every student in K-2. So they're going to have almost like a built-in, what we used to call tier-two academic intervention for everybody. Cindy brilliantly deployed her certified teachers that way, which includes interventionists and her preschool staff. In addition, the other things that are built in, oops, sorry about that. At the high school, middle school, they're going to have intervention days. So on Wednesday, they're going to have scheduled blocks where students can get additional intervention support. So that, so on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, they'll have their regular classes. And Wednesday is devoted for catching up with their And Wednesday is devoted for catching up with their teachers and getting additional interventions. MRI Elementary is going to build in learning labs to kind of replace those homework labs they had in the past, academic labs. Those will be available in the evening with a certified teacher, Monday through Thursday. MRI Elementary is also going to have regular office hours for their staff members and in addition, support for the virtual academy students from three to six, again, with a certified teacher. Happens to be a TA, but they're having to be also certified. So a lot of additional supports there. ECC will modify student schedules to accommodate one to one support as needed. And then again, I'm excited about this, but we are going to be able to deploy front yard visits or ports visits as needed for students that were who are not engaged and we're not seeing and not actively participating in the virtual learning. As opposed to making making phone calls and sending emails that aren't respond to, we'll be able to go see them. So those are some things that are built in throughout the buildings as well as intervention options. So again, the primary thought is that we will continue to monitor the students. We have built in embedded interventions throughout all the buildings and in the district. And to really enhance their virtual distance learning experience. That's really going to be the foundation of hopefully most of our work. But then there's this idea that's been kind of percolating throughout the region about, well, can we bring kids on campus? Is that possible? And it's, it may be possible. What I can tell you what's happening regionally is districts are kind of dipping their toe in the water with this. I don't know of any districts that have committed to this quite yet. But there have been some preliminary conversations with their school boards of what this could possibly look like. So, you know, if the building level intervention team felt like after tracking data and trying virtual and distance learning interventions, that something more was needed that we might consider some on campus support. We haven't made a decision to do that yet, but we're really exploring it. And I'm going to kind of walk you through what our thought is so far about that. It would still go through the referral team, the building level teams to determine, hey, we exhausted all the interventions available for the virtual distance learning experience. It is important for all of us to keep in mind that if we do anything on campus, it will be supplemental. It's, it will be in addition to the virtual distance learning. We won't, we don't have the capacity currently to replace the virtual distance learning. But we hope, the idea is if we go, if we ever do offer on campus supports, if we're able to do it, it'd be a way to kind of jumpstart the student's educational experience and to check in with them in a different way. The other things that, you know, we would have to consider is the health and safety. Working with our building admin team or district leadership team and the Department of Public Health, hey, is it safe to even have any kids in the school? You know, currently in talking with public health officials, they would say it is safe if it's limited in person, small group, not large congregant, that you could possibly do this. That's what they told us so far. Again, it's always evolving, always changing. But as of today, it seems relatively safe if we, if we decided to do this and if if everyone was comfortable trying this down the road, we could possibly do this. The group sizes will be critical. It'd have to be small, probably no more than six kids in the group, probably more likely one to four. We would obviously use our larger learning spaces, large classrooms, R and D, outdoor spaces if weather was permitting to kind of really ensure social distancing and safe practices. Layers of protection, this is lifted straight from the tier two model that we haven't had a chance to launch, but masks required by the students and health screenings, social distancing required, of course, by using large spaces, that would be assured. And then to clean those spaces, we would have designated spaces that would be cleaned after those, after those visits. And in terms of thinking who might be eligible, who might we be, we be serving, this was a real long kind of circuitous conversation, literally helped me in my thinking about this presentation was thinking about the educational equity lens. Instead of thinking of silos and buckets and groups of kids in in kind of rigid ways. But we would want to kind of prioritize kids that we know that might have some disadvantages or some challenges around educational equity in virtual learning. So we would look closely at students who receive special education services, particularly those who receive significant services outside the gen ed setting. A vast majority of our students receive their special ed support in the classroom setting. But there are, there are a percentage of students that receive a lot, 50% or more in the special ed setting. We have to pay particular close attention to those students in addition to their related services, which are almost always provided in a special ed setting. Likewise, we would look at kids who have 504 plans, which are accommodation plans. The vast majority of 504 plans include classroom interventions that are provided by the teacher. But we would want to kind of identify and flag and track the students who receive additional supports outside of class as a possible person we might need to bring on campus. Again, another group we would like to prioritize and pay close attention to is our EL learners. Particularly those first and second year EL learners whose primary language is not English at this time. His academic language is not English and may who may not have English speaking family members there to help. We have to really be mindful of their educational experience during this critical years. It was interesting when you're a small district because you always have kids, these specific kids of mine, when you, when you do these presentations. Other priority groups could would be students who are on alternative services. The experience that that staff had in the spring was difficult. They made some changes that got them to the finish line, but boy, they really missed having that contact with those students. And I think that could be something that could be tinkered with in the fall. We would also consider or prioritize or track students who were who were previously scheduled for regular social emotional supports as part of their daily routine. There are some students that received that informally, but we're talking about kids who actually had that as a part of their regular stay and may not be bed in fitting from the virtual version of that or may need something more. Youth and Need has contacted us over the summer and are willing to offer in person counseling for students. They they do offer telemental health. They feel like that would be effective with a lot of the students they serve, but not all due to privacy issues in the home. And also with their younger students where they do play therapy, that might not be as effective. So they did ask for. And so I told them I'll make that pitch tonight. And then, and then finally, students who through the building intervention team process are just not engaging. We're not seeing them being able to do the work. And we might bring them on campus short term to kind of get them jumpstarted. Couple, a couple considerations to think about if if we decide, and again, we haven't made that decision. We just wanted to, when I showed you that collaborative partner list earlier, I'm going to add the school board to my presentation because you're my final partners I wanted to visit with. We'll have to talk about staffing. The staff that we would use if we decided to do on campus support will be a kind of identified and assigned based on their certification. And who makes sense to provide those supports. We'll obviously work close with SSD partners to kind of make sure that we're using fair share practices and you know, kind of follow all the HR guidelines around assigning utilizing staff. And then the timing, if we decide to do this, when will we start? Well, it's clear that we should not start until the earliest, probably the third week of the school at the earliest. Couple reasons. One was we want to get a chance to really get our feet wet and get the virtual distance learning off to a good start and have our focus be there. Secondly, we need some time to see how the kids are doing there and track, begin tracking that before we start considering interventions that will involve on campus visits. But also it's quite frankly, for the high school, middle school is a matter of practical matter. They don't have a Wednesday until the third week because we start on a Tuesday on September 1st. And the following week is Labor Day. So that's what we, the first opportunity, the earliest opportunity anyway. So for a lot of reasons, we thought we would not start any earlier than the third week and can also push that depending what kind of makes sense. So that's where we're at with our thinking about that at present. So love to answer any questions you might have, or if you have any feedback for our team, love to hear from you guys about that as well.
Vince, thank you. This, I just was getting excited.
That's pretty impressive for nine forty PM.
I was just really excited about what you all did to work through issues and to be innovative and to cover like all of the needs of of our of our students and is is exciting at nine forty one PM.
I mean, we want to be, we want to be thoughtful.
When something happens, you said we were innovative and we thought of everything. It's being recorded, not just.
And I don't know. It was a, I mean, we want to be thoughtful, but we also want to be safe and careful. We want to balance all those considerations. You know, one of the things that came up in our conversation was about some of our students who are taking advanced courses and AP courses and things like that. And and from an educational equity lens, we have some fans, some students, that was, that was part of Dr. Grauer's work a few years ago. Is creating more opportunities for students that are taking AP honors courses. Because we didn't have as diverse of a group at one time and he would have really wanted to give kids an opportunity. And there are some students who might need support in those classes because of their individual circumstances, a levels of support at home, et cetera. So, I mean, I didn't, we didn't specifically include them as a party group, but they're sort of embedded in groups that of students that might struggle during this extended virtual learning, distance learning time. So we think that the plan as laid out as a draft, as a pitch, does potentially encompass anyone who's struggling potentially if we're not able to do virtual distance learning interventions first and are not effective. That's really the thought process.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Are we on to athletics? Is that where we're at in the agenda now?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Vince. It was well done. And Ben, you all together, you did that well. Thank you so much. So athletics is with everything, we are reimagining and pivoting. And as you all know, on July 23rd, we went all virtual. And Misha, the Missouri State High School Activities Association, according to their constitution, if we weren't in brick and mortar and on campus, then you just weren't eligible to participate. So there's been a lot of pivoting, reimagining and being innovative. So on August 13th, Misha then decided, no, they can't participate now if schools are are virtual. So now it's trying to figure out what does that look like if by chance community spread is a certain way. And they have been developed some, some guidance similar to what we have used with our planning for tier two, what the superintendents have used guidance for creating the metrics. So they have worked with health professionals, that is Misha here, regionally, there's been athletic leadership to develop in writing some sports engagement guidance, you know, following CDC. And so what you see on the agenda, the document, it should be a Word document or probably a PDF, but a document that's from our leadership at the high school coming up what they call is a fall alternative plan. And it is essentially still providing students that want to engage in the fall, but not competitively, but you can practice. There'll be conditioning, weight training, and at all times practicing layers of protection. And now low risk is also a category. There's high risk and low risk sports. And cross country, I know they did some, some practicing over the summer. And that is one that we can, without any concern, practice, you know, times together safely with, you know, social distancing. And at first they they are together, but you can space out and then they are off and they're running. So there's no concern with that in particular group. But with the others, and you could see with soccer, softball and volleyball, the alternative fall, it would be if there's some sort of competition, if the community spread allows it, we would look into second semester. And that's also listed here what that would look like for both fall and spring. So it's pretty straightforward. I would like to send a note out to the community, letting everyone know that the SCAA conference, which is Bayless, Brentwood, Crossroads, Hancock, Valley Park and MRH. This is essentially what we'll be doing. It's the majority, I'm going to have to say, I was in a meeting. Not all of us, it's the majority of the school districts in that conference that will be doing that. But the majority will be doing that. So this is where we are with everything with the high school athletics and activities.
So you mentioned that it's complicated here. And obviously, there's, you know, no blanket statement that's being presented. Some of the concerns I know in St. Louis County previously have been around opening up sports for teenagers. And just wondering if you can speak to what makes this different or safer than what was happening earlier this summer?
Well, to speak to your first question, it's safer because it's not competitive. It's contained to just training and conditioning and weight training versus having Bayless come over and compete against our kids. We have a better idea just like cohorts, you know, that was one way to safely bring students back through a blended learning environment. It's, we're aware, we're watching, we know where our kids are in terms of layers of of protection. So that's, that's what I'm saying in regards to why that would be safer. And I was, could you tell me more about your, your question about earlier? Like, what's your question?
Yeah, I mean, the, the other districts within the conference that aren't doing this are doing what? Nothing?
Yeah, let me. It's, well, can I speak real quick, please? So I know the one that does not want the alternative because we just had the conversation this afternoon. They were practicing in July, so they want to compete because they feel differently in terms of community spread and their families. The board are stating that they want their kids to compete and they don't want them to miss out on that. So they want to have a regular fall athletic season, not a delayed one.
Can, and you may not know the answer to this, Karen, but I was under the impression that a lot of the professional sports teams were practicing together during the weight training and then getting ready to compete and then testing prior to competition and coming up positive, which was delaying some of the seasons or making teams have to drop out. I realize that we're looking at the academic level that we're on, but do you have any information on that? Is that, is that accurate or?
Yeah, I am not prepared to speak to that. I don't want to misinform you. I don't. Is it professional teams or collegiate teams or just in general?
I was looking at some professional teams. I'm a basketball fan. And there were several teams that were supposed to actually play that had been practicing together, et cetera. And then unfortunately, and in some, I think some baseball teams too, that had ended up testing positive just from practicing together and then weren't able to compete.
Well, I, I appreciate you sharing that and I understand all the concern. I'm just indicating like right now, this is where we are with Misha and some of the planning that they are suggesting and they've provided a guidance document. It's just kind of where we are in the county and what they're thinking in terms of athletics. So I don't know, Roxanna, did you want to share?
I've been talking, Amber Jordan is actually on the call in the waiting room, so she she can also address. But I've been talking with Amber and Kevin quite frequently and and Karen and I have been tag teaming some of, some of the meetings. So just to be clear, we have a county sports commission that gave, has given guidance now. They gave their final guidance, I believe, last Tuesday. And they've ranked sports in areas that they believe are risk. So all of the sports that are moderate to high risk, our conference is recommending we do not play now. We play in an alternative fall season, which would not start until March. So we're, we're actually proposing that we're deferring all of our sports to March with the exception of cross country because cross country is considered a low risk sport. Kids are running essentially alone, other than that short period of time at the beginning of the race, which again, is is not of high duration. And then they're, they're running alone. Our proposal from the high school though is going from last, the last closure, we were allowing some conditioning practices in July. So we did have kids on campus in very small groups outside more than six feet apart. So we did have kids on campus in very small groups outside, more than six feet apart. Our two coaches that were running those conditioning, both in the, well, we did have some kids in the weight room as well. So Joe Spinks and Ryan Rizzuko did a really good job making sure that we followed all of the guidance and we had no incidents. And so we're worried for health and safety about kids of not doing anything between now and March. That, that might be kind of bad for, for their conditioning and development. And so what the high school is actually asking to do is to not have any of the high risk sports until March. Go ahead and allow our kids to compete in cross country, because that's been deemed low risk by the county and the health department. And then allow that socially distanced conditioning like we were doing in July, just to give kids something to engage in, because some of those kids really, really need that. So that's their proposal, if that provides any additional clarity.
And we also have what high school leadership has put together their proposal, what that looks like. Because I know Brandy always went like, well, what does it look like if they're in a small group? What are the layers? And we have that in writing as well, since they have thought through all of that. So the coaches would have explicit guidance on how to engage. Because of course, we want to make sure that our staff, they know what's expected of them, so they can function safely. So that was developed for our coaches as well.
Thank you.
So I have, I actually just have a clarifying question. So I know that's in discussion around the fall season. So is the recommendation then to do the spring alternate season? We're pushing our spring sports to the May through July timeframe as well?
It's.
That actually would give the kiddos that play dual sports a better opportunity than.
Correct, correct.
Especially if some of our kids are eligible for scholarships.
Yeah, so it's a package. So if you alternate fall, it's all of that together considering spring.
Also, because we've been talking to a lot of the sports physicians who are worried about overload on kids too. So stacking a bunch of sports together with no rest can also be harmful. And so, you know, if you do the alternate fall, you also need to do the alternate spring.
I note that there's no specific action item around this. So I assume that means that we have a chance to think about this and maybe ask some more questions or get some more data before.
Well, what would you like from us?
Can you send those training documents, if you haven't already, around to the board to show what types of protocols are in place for the safety of the athletes?
I do think if the cross country team is going to move forward, they would need to know that probably sooner than the September board meeting. Because, you know, those, those practices would be moving forward. Although at this point, listening to the athletic directors, we're not even really sure what competition would look like at this point, because we can't have gatherings of more than 50 in parks. So they're, they're still trying to work through, you know, how small those groups would be and, and, you know, what that would look like. But I have seen the plans, so the plans look like they put them in the low risk category and they would also have protocols around what, what those meets would look like, which I think would address your concern, Katie, about the problems with other youth sports, with people congregating before and after and, and those kinds of issues.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not very hopeful of the competitions as well, Roxanna, because again, we had the conversation this afternoon. And it's, they, they don't have their head wrapped around that at this point.
Amber Jordan might have been added as a panelist if she wants to add anything.
I think it was pretty much covered. We have just, I mean, we've been kind of like how you guys have been when, with academics and a lot, a lot of meetings where things have changed daily. And our recommendation, especially for our cross country right now, if cross country is going to get a season in, I don't know if there will be enough competition in the spring for them, because most of the schools are going to compete in this fall season. So I think cross country is the one that I'd really like you to look at, because they may not have the option in the spring like the other sports. At least in the other sports, we know that the SCAA conference that we're in, they're all talking about moving to that spring alternative and fall alternative. So we would at least have 10 games within that conference that we could play. But with the cross country, I don't know if they would have any competition in the spring.
And what's the implication of no competition?
All the rest of the schools in the suburban area and within our own conference are choosing to do the fall cross country based on recommendations from the local health departments and stuff, moving the cross country. It's been in the low risk category this entire time. And so they've had more time to make plans and kind of look at what that would look like if they had competitions. So I think most of the suburban areas choosing to participate in that fall cross country season. So I don't know if, how many schools would choose not to and not sure if we would have competition in the long run. So allowing them to continue practicing now, like they did. They had camps over the summer and maintain that, you know, less than 20 people meeting and safe distances. And the document that Karen can share with you is beneficial for that group of kids especially.
I both get the urgency and am feeling uncomfortable making a decision urgently about this. So I'll just name that.
I, I agree. I, I understand urgency, but I'm not comfortable making a decision this quickly, especially when, you know, there's information, there's more information that could be provided to us that we could see. So I'll say that as well.
To quote Karen from earlier, she said, "Don't make quick decisions." So I'm going to go with that.
I appreciate that. Are there any?
Recorded.
Are there any other items that you can think of that, you know what? And we also have, I was present in a presentation. I don't have this document and maybe Roxanna, you have seen it. What the athletic leadership, regional leadership, they have their guidance. Do you have that? Because I don't.
I believe that I do. You're talking about the guidance that came out from the commission about? Yes, I do have that.
Okay. Would you all be interested in seeing that? Because that's where all these alternative seasons are pretty much being based on.
Yeah, my philosophy is the most data and information you can give us so we can make an informed decision as quickly as possible would be the best avenue right now.
Okay.
You know, I, I also realize, you know, we've got some kiddos that probably may have some scholarship opportunities or this season would guide them towards what their choice might be for college based upon their experience across country. So, you know, I, I too am not comfortable making a decision so urgently, but at the same time, I'd like to try to expedite it by getting that information as soon as possible.
Done. You will have it tomorrow at the latest.
And if folks think of other questions, I'm sure they can voice them or put them in an email. But appreciate it. I recognize that we're going to have to, at some point, figure out what our dipping our toe back into bringing folks together looks like. And, you know, just want to be thoughtful too about who and what and how we prioritize with that too. So, um, great. Ed Rich, the next item is the equity website.
I can breeze through this pretty quickly. It would not be very fulfilling for me to read through the slides, which are basically excerpts, excuse me, of the, of the equity page on the website. And I urge you to take a look at it yourself for several reasons. I'll get back to that in just a second. So the object of the, of the effort here in the communications department, where the equity page is concerned, is to kind of assure and remind the community of the board's ongoing and longtime commitment to equity considerations and that they won't get lost in the maelstrom of the day, I guess. So back in the winter and the early spring, when you went to your desktop or whatever device you're using in a mobile sense and you went to the homepage, the first thing you saw was that big, bold, dark blue and black reminder of the bond issue coming up. Well, now that's been replaced with this oversized banner, which takes people right to the educational equity page, which I repositioned under the programs tab, so that it's now, it's not the top dropdown, but it's the top substantive dropdown, we'll say, right beneath overview. So again, all you do is you tap and you go right there. All right, I've got some boxes I need to move off my screen here. I'm showing you. So we began, of course, with the MRH commitment to equity and education. I thought it would be best not to have more dropdowns, where you got to click onto another page, then click back, then click down, then click over, then click back. It's all on one page. It's just easier, that's all. Next section is our ongoing educational equity definition from Singleton and Linton. This is the, I guess, the walk, the walk section. MRH seeks to remove educational hurdles for all children, period. It's our commitment. And the centerpiece of this section, of course, is the link down there that you can see at the bottom to policy ACJ, which all of you adopted six months ago. Thought it was important to remind people that there will be yearly, if not more frequent, reviews of our equity work. And it will be scientific, it will be data driven, we'll look at state test scores, staff hiring or retention, figures regarding discipline, family engagement, screening of gifted, the dual credit and AP classes, and of course, what we're doing in our actual physical facilities to ensure proper access for those who need it. These are the three major questions that we've said that we are going to consider when making the, the major equity decisions. Benefits, who is differently impacted based on race, ethnicity, gender, so on? And what can be included to decrease or eliminate disparities? It would not be an educational equity page if we didn't have a link to the educational equity and social justice resolution, which you passed three and a half years ago. Yes, it's been that long. And this page, this section, I guess, describes our relationship with Midwest and Plains. It's more, this is not the entire section on that, by the way, but the top portion is a descriptor of what they do and what services they provide for us and how we work alongside them. And I thought it needed stuff that people could actually use. This is not current, by the way. This is a snapshot of what the section looked like last week, like on Friday. It looks different today. That, that community announcement about the broken heart of America is, that was last week or something. But it's updated now. That consideration is for online and distance learning. That goes right to a map center section about equity considerations during the, the times that we're in with remote and virtual instruction. The news and publications and articles section right now on the live site, I just posted it today. Turns out that two days ago, our proposition E, Architectural Partner, Itner, was selected by the National School Boards Association to produce the, I guess, the centerpiece video for an educational equity seminar that's coming up in late September. So kudos to them. And I think that kind of demonstrates, we probably picked the right partner for that. So to keep this thing vibrant and relevant, we're going to continue driving traffic on social media. Every weekly e-newsletter that comes out on Monday will have a permanent link every week. I'm going to need to figure out how to use, utilize graphics and hopefully video. I would like to begin interviews with equity thought leaders, and we have plenty of those in this area. And I would like submissions from you members, administrators. I could solicit contributions in the way of blogs, and I know blogs is so 10 years ago. But maybe teachers and counselors have something that they'd like to contribute in the way of content. So submissions would be very welcome. Keep this site robust and active and at top of mind for our families. And that's what I got for you.
Great, thank you, Ed. I know you had mentioned that and Karen had, had mentioned it in previous meetings, but wanted to make sure we paid some further attention to the plan for that. Great. We'll move on then to, to board. Obviously, our opening day for staff is next week. And then school will be virtually starting. So not a whole lot of other things on here, but appreciate that there is stuff beginning to happen. Is there a Joe's Place update?
Yes, there is. Want to give it, Ralph? Go ahead.
Well, we both can share. About two weeks ago, on the 28th, Brandy and I were in Joe's Place meeting, which we had to catch short because we had a work session that same evening with our regular board members. But we did have a new board member come on board. He's actually the pastor of Crossroads Presbyterian Church here in Maplewood. Unfortunately, I got his first name and it's a biblical name, but I couldn't remember his last name. But that was one of the things that he introduced himself. And Julia made sure that we got opportunity to speak to him briefly and everything. And we're glad he's on board. But at the same time, there was a financial report that was supposed to be sent to us and we got a little bit of information, but not as much as I was expecting. And maybe Julia's still working on that right now. But she mentioned about some few donations that had come in recently from QuickTrip. And I think there was a Unitarian church that sent some donations and some grant money was also mentioned. And I think there was a thousand dollars came through, through the PayPal. So these extra donations have been helpful here recently. And also, one of our businesses in Maplewood, TAPS, has opened up recently. And they were giving their portion of their tips money for Joe's Place curbside. Actually, it started the 18th and it's going to run through the 23rd. So if anyone happens to go by there over the next few days, just mention Joe's Place. And a portion of the tips, I believe, 10% or more will be going towards Joe's Place. And a portion of the TIPS, I believe, 10% or more will be going towards Joe's Place. There are a few other things that I think are going on that maybe, I don't know, Brandy, if maybe that, maybe you caught that I'd gotten. Like I said, we weren't in that meeting very long due to our regular work session meeting that same evening. But these are some of the things I kind of highlighted. She mentioned about our parents, recently got married, the house parents. So, we congratulated them. And also, she was concerned about with this COVID-19, about making sure that our young men get the support that they need, you know, emotionally and sociably during this COVID-19 period that we're going through. So, those are the things of great concern that she mentioned. So, I'm sure there was a lot more that we weren't able to be a part of during that meeting that particular evening, but hopefully I get more information from her. I don't know, Brandy, if maybe you've gotten more since then.
Well, the two things I want to add, the two things I wanted to add, Ralph, is our new addition is Pastor Josiah Green. And we also got a, got $5,000 from the Psy Foundation. And a lot of people may recognize that because it was started by the Metcalf family, their grandmother. So, still, they're still there for the district and helping us out. And the house parents have been doing great, especially in this pandemic. They have just been amazing. So, just want to say thank you to them. That's all I wanted to add.
Okay. Thank you, Brandy, for adding that. Are there any questions?
Thank you both. Onto MSBA and advocacy. I wanted to start off and just make a statement to the Board. In May, I asked you all to endorse the Early Childhood Demands Letter that was published by Ready by Five, which in part called for a local public funding source for early childhood education at that time. And now, I believe that the values of Ready by Five and the individuals and organizations involved are aligned with this Board, in particular, providing a great public education to all children within a priority on ensuring educational equity and the importance of education for the whole child beginning at birth. Please know that I am focused in my commitment to this public school community, of which early childhood education is a part. I do encourage MRH community to continue to show up to support quality early childhood education and to engage with others who align with our values of equity and quality education, especially for those families who lack access. I know that there's been some media out there, and just wanted to address that with you all and with our broader community. Before I move on to the next part, but I'll pause in case there's any reaction there. The other item in this agenda item is a message of state-level advocacy that was shared with me by colleagues in University City. Think their concerns obviously mirror a lot of ours and the conversations that we've had. And just wanted to share their message to state officials. And, you know, they didn't exactly ask folks to sign on. It was more like, see what we wrote, and, you know, if you would want to use something like this as a template for your own message, feel free to do that. So, just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, and I think, obviously, a lot of the messages in here are appropriate for where we're all at with the challenges that we're going to be facing for, for some time. All right, we can find finance then, Chris.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It's been a long evening, so I won't belabor all of these things. But we are into the reporting for our very first month of the fiscal year of '21, which is July 2020. So, the items of interest do a good job of explaining what's been going on in the past month. The things that I would draw attention to on the revenue side is last, you may remember, last spring, there was some turmoil in the county. It wasn't related to a pandemic. It was related to some other things going on in the county that delayed some of our payments. So, we received some of our payments across the fiscal year in July. As we are a cash-based accounting organization, we have to record the revenue when we receive it. So, those threw off our revenue numbers just a little bit. So, coming into this year, which oddly enough is during the pandemic, is more normal on the dispersants from the county. Those show lower than they have in the past. Also, last year, we received some federal revenues across the fiscal year when they were really intended for the prior fiscal year. And the state, as we're all well aware, the state has adjusted the school allocations for the formula foundation payments. All of the bulk of that was realized in the July payment. So, that was adjusted down as a result. So, those are the revenue changes on the expenditure side. They are what you would expect. Salary and benefits are on track with prior years. Purchase services and supplies are down with us starting school. Virtually, there are some expenses that have been delayed. They will likely happen in the event that we come back to school in a, in a personal way. But those expenses right now are delayed. Capital outlay is pretty much where we would expect them, given the time of the year, and with our bond projects coming up and taking the bulk of the capital outlay out of the operating budget and shifting it into the bond funds. Are there any questions? I will also note that you will not see a budget amendment for the loss of revenue due to the pause on the preschool program. The preschool program doesn't begin collecting revenue until September. It's when you'll see those. So, once, once those revenues would hit the actual point in the year where they would become relevant on the, on the financial statements, we will begin making those adjustments. There's no need to do that now. Okay. Moving on to the Citizens National Bank Wire Transfer of Funds Agreement. So, as part of our, our new depository agreement with Citizens National Bank for the next few years, they have asked that we begin to facilitate our own wire transfers through our online banking portal. It's a pretty common thing across the industry these days. And it takes the work, it takes the, it really streamlines the work as a result. So, in order to do that, however, we, the Board does need to pass a resolution as well as some other things that I will speak to briefly here. So, in order to do this, we have to set a couple of limits. Any one transfer, the limit we're choosing to set at $3 million. The daily limit at $3 million, and the monthly limit at $6 million. These, these limits were chosen as a result of our bond payments. So, we looked at our bond payments over the next five years and feel that these numbers will accommodate those. If something comes up and we need to change these in any way, we'll need to come back to the Board to have these moved. Next. I'm scrolling through this document, excuse me. We get down to the authorization of parties to execute these agreements, which would be me. I've left my signature off here intentionally until the Board approves it, at which point I will sign. That's essentially authorizing me to fill this out, sign it, and turn it into the bank. This is also authorizing Roxanna Meacham as Assistant Superintendent to also execute said agreements in my absence. This is typically one of those items that would be filled by either the Assistant Superintendent or the Superintendent with Karen's retirement pending. And because it does take a Board action to execute this particular agreement, I've opted to have Roxanna Meacham since, at this point, she is intending to return next year. So, just to make this document last as long as we possibly can. At the conclusion, once the Board, if the Board chooses to vote on this, this authorization, I will need Katie and Maria to stop by the office and put their live signatures on this document, so I can then seal it with the district seal and deliver it to Citizens National Bank. And again, the other blanks, the other items on here that would typically be filled in, I've left off for security reasons. Our tax ID number being one, and the actual account numbers that we will be using to transfer funds from. So, sorry for that long explanation. Are there any questions? Okay, moving on then. The final budget changes for fiscal year '20. Yes, I did say fiscal year '20. Every year in August, August 15th, to be exact, we submit our annual Secretary to the Board Report, or ASBR, as it were. Because of COVID and the decrease in expenditures as a result, we bumped into a rule that says that because of some complicated accounting things that you don't necessarily care all that much about, essentially, we bumped into a limit on the amount that we can transfer from our incidental fund into our teacher's fund. And that is a result of a higher-than-expected fund balance as a result of a expenditure freeze that we essentially implemented in March. So, as I said, all this is, this is a net change of zero to the budget. It's just changing our transfers to and transfers from our incidental fund to our special revenue fund and/or teacher's fund. Are there any questions? Great. That concludes my items for the evening.
All right, we are to the action item portion of the meeting. A motion on policy BBFA.
I move to adopt, re-adopt board policy BBFA as presented.
A second.
Thank you, Francis. Thank you, Brandy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Another motion?
Move to approve policy ACA as presented by MSBA Action.
Second. Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Nikki. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move to approve the Citizens National Bank Online Wire Transfers Authorization Resolution as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Ralph. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move to adopt the 2020-2021 academic calendar as modified.
Second. Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Nikki. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. COVID data review. You might need to chat here for a moment. Does anyone feel moved at this point to put it out there? How frequently we're going to be?
I think we said weekly, right?
Yeah, I think weekly.
Okay.
I think we start weekly and then go from there.
Yes, I agree, weekly.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Education, we review weekly the tracking of regional transmission rate, positivity rate, and number of new cases, as well as zip code and age groups affected as primary considerations for moving between tiers.
Second.
Thank you, Francis. Thank you, Ralph. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move to approve the fiscal year '20 fund transfers as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Nikki. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution.
I don't know how this works. I, I'll wait, I'll wait for somebody to make the motion and then ask for the discussion, but I don't think we need.
Okay, that's fine. We can have just, I know we're out of order if we don't let.
I'll, I'll make the motion then to approve the resolution in response to health emergency as presented.
Thank you, Francis.
Second.
Thank you, Ralph. Any discussion?
I don't, I don't think we need this. And our attorney said it's at our discretion. We just voted to meet weekly to discuss data, and we've already been meeting whenever we need. We, we don't need a resolution to say what we've been doing for a while now, so.
I would just say that in my time on the Board, the resolutions that we have passed have been things that we really are working towards, working on, focused on. They really mean something to us. Like Nikki said, this is one that, I mean, I don't necessarily mind passing it, but we're already doing. So.
Fair. Any other thoughts?
It does seem kind of redundant, but, you know. I don't know if it gives us any further leeway in order to change more things into the future. I don't think we've been necessarily shy about needing to change things when we, when we have to. But I know this gives us something to sort of reevaluate board policy on. But Cindy's reasoning was, made sense to me too. It was totally kind of up to us.
Does it hurt us if we do pass it? Is there anything we?
I'd like further discussion, maybe even the knee on it. There are a few things in there that do concern me, like suspending board policy as necessary. How does that work? Who makes these decisions? When does that happen? I, yeah, I'd like more.
All right. So, we have an open motion on the table. All those in favor of the recommendation, say aye. All those opposed? Say nay.
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 All right. We will not pass this resolution, and sounds like potentially need to revisit it or have some questions about it. All right, a resolution on suspending policy.
I move to approve the resolution on suspending policy to align with COVID-19 emergency legislation in ways as presented.
Thank you, Nikki.
Also.
Seconds are.
Thank you, Brandy. All those, any discussion on this one?
This is one where.
We can't hear you, Nikki.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're on ultra slow motion. You're on ultra slow motion.
Not well.
No. No.
Why don't you turn off your video and speak? That might help with the bandwidth. Go ahead. Okay, we can't hear you still, so I guess that didn't help.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I give up.
Okay, so no decision there then. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. And the administrative procedure.
Move to approve administrative procedure JOAP-3. Record, record designation and definition as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Francis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. I move to enter executive session in accordance with Section 610.021, subsections 2, 3, 9, 11, 12, and 13, and Section 610.022 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri on August 20th, 2020, for the following specific reasons: personnel matters, real estate matters, finance matters.
Thank you, Nikki.
Second.
Thank you, Francis. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nikki, did you say aye?
Yes, aye.
Thank you. All right. That will end the session and I'll see the rest of the board in executive session. Thank you.